Right. This is the call to call me Jordan. Um. It's on the agenda, it's a meeting from May twenty eighth. Twenty five. Everyone having a chance to go now?
That was type of.
What's up?
That was type of. I'll line two or three, it should be penny, but you can't not penny.
Hang on one second, my reason is that. Two or three?
Yeah.
Oh, penny based again instead of penny?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That would cost more than a penny, not anything.
It's just a little.
Anything else?
Well, I guess.
Carol, you got that?
Yeah.
Uh, I have a couple first of all. Let's see. I let him know we found it. I think there's maybe one. One on the back. Uh, it should be, the approval block should be like, it says I wasn't here.
Wait, wait, where are you?
The approval block online. Line fifty four should be Mike Iroh, because I wasn't here.
Okay.
I think that's it for now. Anyone else? So I want to make a motion for improvement, I'll make a motion for improvement, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
In opposed? Dan there is. What did he have, Dan? You're a team though, okay. Hello, thank you. That's such a, well, I was on Zoom.
Yeah, yeah.
I was on Zoom, so yeah, I can roll off. All right, next. Update. Uh, you see, the park complaint with the milk, milk market play. Um, applicant park proposal. Everyone get, get their. Parking plan. It was actually true. There was an old one that was from two thousand and three, I believe, or two thousand and six. Then there was another one. That they used to do that.
So I gave you the two thousand and thirty one, because we had in the office, and so you could see what your original scheme was. They didn't. They did submit the Alpine and Labyrinth. Marketplace recently.
So. I don't know, I would be addition obvious, I don't seem to have it already. There was. So, uh. Two hundred. A hundred and fifty eight there now, Mount Carroll's at it. Again, a hundred and fifty eight listed on. And then the total required of. Um, three hundred and thirty. Is that right? For what's standing out?
I don't know, I haven't memorized these, I had so many different numbers.
I actually have to blow them up for my tutor and try and. Add them up, but I believe that's correct, there's. Three hundred and thirty inputs, inputs needed currently, like, right.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's right.
And they have a hundred and fifty eight. A significant. Reduction on, and, and we're true. Um, I'm not sure. What we can do about it, but. Anyone, Carol, you have any comments?
Um, well, my only comment right at the moment is that they're not coming in to discuss, they're coming in when they come in to do the hikes. So they're gonna come in to discuss the parking. Um, they just submitted this, I just wanted you to have it, I want you guys to see it. Look at it and prepare yourself for your discussion with them. Uh, when they come in for the hikes, which is, um. If they can see, the next meeting, the next meeting, the next meeting.
So are they gonna discuss the? The mill? Marketplace and?
Well, that's what I told them.
And a big, right, so market play. The. And, when they need to discuss the place.
Right, and, and. And why they gave you the, well, plan from two thousand and three. Uh, was that it includes some of the other problem areas. So, it includes, uh. The Plaza, Lincoln Center North, uh, Plaza as well, and then some of the areas, um. Associated now with Riverwalk, so.
So Lincoln Center North, are you correct that is over here by where the theater is?
Yeah.
That's Lincoln Center North.
Parcel A dash one.
Parcel A one, right. As we did, there was a countdown for that, when we did the.
Well, Charles.
Self Charlie.
Right.
Do you have that now? Do you have that now? We did a copy of that.
Not today.
So, do we have a copy of that?
Well, thanks for your speaking.
I'm just wondering how, if we have a copy of that. What they have, what, what's expected, they had a first square footage of restaurant seating and stuff, not efficient, if any of that is as well. If it's the same, I mean.
Does that exist right now, Carol, or it's just the number that that's there exists?
I think you did both of them. I don't, I'm. But, because I gave.
I mean, we've done too many things, I can't remember.
Okay.
I'm gonna have to pull that project up, I'm gonna have to look at it, see what. Uh, materials we had, and you have that bearing, those line, so.
I think you should look at that too, because it's, maybe, it may not just be this one. Area, maybe the whole thing.
Right, but our listener goes and doesn't own that, but I wanted you to see the big, the big picture, so.
Does anyone have any questions, or? They want to make any more information, if they want to get prior to. Meeting with, uh, so a beat on this.
What happened to they built?
We should build that in. Mid eighty, well, it was prior to the, the mill was built.
Mill?
Hundred years ago.
Okay.
The mill, the mill was relegated and turned into the marketplace back in mid eighties, and, and. That's from survey stuff.
That's just a survey.
Yeah, about eighty eight.
Yeah.
Somewhere in the mid. Eighty six, the planning board back in the.
Well, so, so there was no, um. There wasn't enough parking back then, but we didn't have parking regulations back then. So technically, there's nothing that we can do. I mean, it's, it's a. Approved. Use, what we can do is, as, as people come in to change use. We can, uh. If we want to, uh, not allow any new use that expands the parking demand. Because they don't need it now. They can still, like, if it's a, if it's a retail store, and they want to change it, and keep it as a retail store. It's grand bought, if they want to change that retail store into a restaurant, or a movie theater, or some other use. We can then look at it and say. Doesn't make sense based on what the current parking is versus the, the perceived parking code. But we can't make people don't move. Parking, just because you changed the rules.
I guess the thing is, is this, is this, uh, like, a waste of time, right, like, let's say, everything's like, all those businesses are ready operation. And they clearly have a huge deficit. So if we're like, well, you don't need the parking requirements. Do they have to close their business without?
I would say no.
So like. You know, like, what, what would we do that would be either helping them or finding a solution?
It's definitely something that. There is a problem.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Parking problem in the whole town. But. I, I don't think we can cure by, by telling people they can't. That they gotta give it to this business.
Right.
But I think there's things that happen as the years have gone along, like towns, the town has part of this. Part of this parking lot, Jitsi Cafe is part of the parking lot. I mean, there, there's things that maybe should be, should be, could be done there to say that, you know, you, you have to maintain all that parking for this. This bill would be my suggestion, one of the things to think about, anyway. Uh, but those things all need to be discussed with them. But certainly it would be nice to know if, if the A one parcel, if we could look at that, see. Compared to how many, what the differences in that part as well. I think, I think Carol signed it to us, but.
We probably, we probably did, but. As I said, there's a lot to go, what going on, I can't remember. I remember seeing it when I was twelve, thank you.
But.
I remember seeing it when El Charo came into something out of somewhere.
And I think it was, it was very much of what was there and all different. From the movie theater to the grocery store, to the post office, and I think the same preparation thing is. But I remember I, I sent you, or, or brought you a copy of what was approved, did El Charo, and it looked pretty much like what's up with it now, so. More questions?
Okay, so, the. Spreadsheet chart over here, do they supply this as part of this, this metal?
Okay, which, which one are we talking about here? On, on popping plan.
The baseline.
Just, yeah, find myself on, right, it says receive June third, and they, and they.
Uh, they, they made the chart, yeah.
There's, just that I know is this, um, although it's not significant when you're missing finding whatever space. But their rounding doesn't, is not consistent.
Their what is inconsistent, the round?
Round, I'm total pocket, oh, like, round point nine seven rounded is six. My, they have seven, that's only one space, but they've done that like, like in. Numerous different things, fifteen point seven, rounded to seventeen, five point nine, rounded to seventeen. It's only six, I, I didn't count, there's not a whole lot of spaces there, and it doesn't make any difference in the shortage, but it just involved that they're. Storing themselves of, of. Um. Compliance, but just to know if we did that or they did that.
No, we did not say, that, that's all I wanted to know.
Well, there's no questions, we'll move on, and are they, they come in, you said the next meeting?
Yes.
Next meeting, come then, okay. So then we'll move on to the. Request qualifications, updated master plan. Updates on that, Carol?
No, it's just to, it just stays on here until we actually.
Do we have any?
So we haven't received any, but I've got calls from them, I. I assume all the people that I sent things to, except for maybe the one, the person who did it, who did it for us before. But I didn't hear from the rest of them.
Do you have any idea when we might be submitting something?
Well, the deadline is not till June twenty seventh.
I understand, so they told me. They told them.
Yes.
Uh, the update on November twenty seventh senior plan.
Okay, I reached out to him, but I haven't heard back yet, so if I didn't reach out and tell, um, this morning, first thing this morning. I haven't heard back.
Okay, the update on the recent court decision. We're on way up neurons. In fact, you go. Thanks for Jake's best response. Now, pretty. Um. We asked the headman. Maybe come to a meeting and talk, was about this. Uh, I don't know if this answer all questions that everybody had or not. Go over, Carol, have you gone over, do you have any comments?
Uh. No, I have not kind of, I mean, I distributed it, I made copies and everything.
Well, after reading this, anyone has any questions, if you can. Make sure and get them to Carol, and, uh. We can decide whether or not we want to have Jason. And talk about, or zoom in or whatever, talk about this. That would be good.
Submit questions to Carol, when you come back.
Yeah.
It's not starting right now.
If, if you have.
Well, this makes it sound like. Like people can't have murals. And it has to be treated like fine. And so then, how would we get people to have murals, would it be by like a selected, who were people that individually vote on the mural?
Well, that's probably a question that could ask.
Because like, the last line that he wrote back is like, that you have to have like a blanket on a wall, that would also then state that homeowners couldn't have murals.
Right. But it says that, you know, it thinks murals need to be treated the same as any other sign. So that's any sign request, and according to our, our sign ordinance. Uh, signs are. Signs are only allowed in certain places, and residential, no, present potential, right, certain signs also, so I mean, we have a pretty. Big sign ordinance.
Right.
I just. I would ask some questions for Jason too, about how we, how we enforce this, because I mean, we have, she's here tonight.
Yeah.
Um, and, and she came in and asked why we're talking about this, to see if we can give them some. Guides, you know, as to whether or not they can do things, have murals, where they can have them, where they can't. Go ahead.
I, I think the, the key sentence to me in the letter is, it says, as for the town of Lincoln, I think that pretty much any mural would meet the town of Lincoln's definition of a sign. I'm wondering if we. Need to or could change our definitions of, of a sign. In such a way that, that it. Doesn't apply to. What we would consider murals. You know, a, artistic drawings that aren't related to a, a business, or an event, or they're just a. You know, piece of art, right, just big and public. Um, I, I'm just wondering if there's wording that we could use. To define that, I mean, we've, we've sorted on that with, with, um. Things that we don't consider signs, we specifically said, you know, uh, uh, uh. You know, it's word about a directional sign for traffic is not considered a sign. So that if, you know, coming out of. Such and such a business, and right turn only, or do not enter, those aren't considered signs. Is there some way that we could? Qualify what a sign is by excluding things that are typically. Artistic, don't relate to a, a, a business, or a group of business, or an event, or a place, but are just artistic in nature. I don't know what the right wording for that is, but, um. I would think somewhere in the country, someone has that sort of wording in, in sign language.
I think those questions, there's some, you book, I agree with you, that, that sense says a lot, but so does the one where he says. That's, uh, the order seems so narrow that the town would arguably enforce its ordinance against levels tomorrow if it wanted to. So. He's saying that, that, that kind of predicts what, what we want to do, I mean, if we want to allow murals. Um, he's saying that. Was Jason the one that represented?
Yes.
Yeah.
Why, you know, why wouldn't we just make category for murals instead of kind of, if you like, you know.
I, well, I mean, yeah, I mean, there's people who like it. There's people who do a great job with it, but there's also people who might put things up to defend somebody else.
No, I understand that, but I'm saying, I'm thinking murals being an artistic thing as opposed to a sign being a business related. Uh, I'm thinking that it should have its kind of its own category, instead of manipulating a sign. Uh, wordage. Right, I mean, have a section just for murals and then go through and put what we need to put in. So murals are artistic pieces.
Well, that's why I asked, you know, maybe I had Jason here, but, so. The, I think what we gotta do is publish some questions, do a little bit. You know, come up with some questions. Send your questions via email to Carol, and what we can do is we can get Jason online and say, what's the best way to handle this, we have people that want to have murals. And is it to make our own, uh, mural part of our sign ordinance, or is it to, to make it a category? A category of something that says art, or what's our best way to move forward here without someone getting challenged, it, it, it'd be in the town line. Because, you know. We're here to enforce it for everybody. Right. So, I don't think we have to, the ones that's set we made or change will have to be voted on by the town meeting, so.
We want, we want, we want, it looks like a local district, and you know, the whole of the place, so.
Yes.
County town.
Well, I mean, you know.
You want, you were born here, you have done it.
Well, yeah, I think too, like, art has a way of filtering out itself. Like, if somebody puts up front yard and defends people, people speak, and people have backlash, and normally that would impact business. So then the business would go, get that down. So I think a homeowner, either kind of same thing, and when you put up anything with, well, you're always running threats, regardless if it's a sign or it's a mural. But still, like, there's some ugly signs in town, but they're still a sign, and they're still for business, and they're doing the job, but they might not be aesthetically clean to make.
Well, it depends on the only can afford.
Right, right.
Well, it depends on.
Or, yeah.
Something eyesight beholder, you know, some people like it, some people, some people think it's offensive, some people like it, but, you know, I mean. But generally, you should have a set of guidelines. That direct people, give them guidance as to what they can. What they can expect, town to enforce or what the town wants it to do, how such is size of it. You know, whether it's three dimensional, I mean, if it's, if it's painted on a building, how many walls in the building can it have? I mean, our sign ordinance is pretty, pretty detailed in a lot, lot of ways, so. But murals just haven't come up, and, until recently, and. I mean, I, I think it would be a good thing to have some sort of a section on it, so, what's that, Joe?
The sign order state, that, you know, or back to, to do an establishment building, as is a sign. You put a mural in the track, no, it's a item.
But if you want this to come up as a result of that, what is a sign, right, it, it, it has to be. Content neutral. You know, so, I mean, isn't that what, a, a lot of this came up as, as a result of it, so. You know, is, is a mural content neutral, and if you show a donut, is it content neutral, I mean, it, it. It, there was so much, but that's why Jason said, look, we were gonna, we talked about making some sort of an artist mural, so we could get people moving on it, see what they would, I was giving some track, but. Jason said, I'd wait till the end of this court case. Court case is over, and I think it's, it, that we owe it to the people who want to do something to say, yeah, we're gonna try to make something so you can have murals, and. We're going to put these limitations in, or, or it's just gonna be, you can do what you want, because it's artistic, and. People have to look at it, I mean, and. But I think we're gonna need some legal guidance, one way or the other, on, on how that goes.
There's plenty of legal guidance, see, I think, see, some other things, like, it's probably only legal Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, and Tuesday, and Thursday, it looks somewhere else, I don't know.
Cool.
Well. Wait, what?
This doesn't make any sense, it is written in that, you know, after reading it, I want to very, yeah, we're good, we're doing something or not.
Well, in the, in the bench trial, it seemed more like how the town enforced it was where it got sticked. Not exactly the law that they were breaking. But be, yeah, because they like enforce cer, they allow certain murals and posters here, and certain places here, but they didn't with that. So, it wasn't that early, yeah.
Well, some of those concerns that were expressed about murals, don't forget, we can't control the content of signs either.
No.
So someone can put up a sign that is totally ugly, extremely offensive, using. Language that people don't want to see on. But if we've approved, uh, you know, whatever, five foot by three foot sign inside, whatever they put on it, they put on it, we can't regulate it. We can do what you said, you can get all upset or whatever, but. We can't regulate it anymore than we could if they put up. Big mural that was ugly, offensive, whatever, um.
Carol, can you do a search and see if there's? Any other towns out there that have ordinances that might be specific to?
Maybe Austin, Austin has a lot of here.
Oh, I'm sorry, where?
Austin.
Oh, Austin, Texas?
Yeah.
And that too. Well, well, that's also a cost.
I think, Carol, I think Nashville, I think it was Nashville and New Hampshire. Yeah.
I mean, I'll look to, I mean, I, there was one that I found about, uh, when we first looked this up, about. Uh, a boy who painted a mural on his house. And, got, the town got really upset with it, because he painted this mural, and it covered so much of the house. So, but, I think that was Massachusetts. I'll see what I can find out again, right back. But if you, if you can look that up.
Like, there's gotta be around one of the motels, it runs about three and two long, you go to Mayfair, maybe they have an ordinance.
Hi, I'm sorry, where?
Lancaster.
Lancaster, New York?
Mayfair, you know, we go to Mayfair, just going through the Paulborough, back inside the motel, we went one into the other. The parking lot, and the backside of the motel, it's even Mayfair, it's like a college building.
I guess, we use more pressing issues, that we have people that want to do murals now. So where does, where does the town stand in regards to allowing these people to do murals? And, and that's, but that's a question that I think we suppose that Jason, do we, that's a question that we should have an answer to. Soon, I would think, whether we provide it, or whether if you have a Jason give us some advice, but if these people want to know if they can put them up. You know, they've waited, case is over, uh, I would think you should be able to give them some sort of a. Uh, idea as to whether or not they, they put some up, whether they can't, whether they gotta comply with the existing. Town sign ordinance, do we, are we gonna? Town sign ordinance, do we, are we gonna, or are they gonna have to wait till we model a mural ordinance on our own? So, so.
Okay. Okay, so you would like him to attend my Zoom at your next meeting? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I mean. And 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 I I'd actually lighten it. Come up with an answer for these people and say. Ask him, you can ask him a question, so we've got people wanna put murals up and. For me, as a a board person, planning board person. I don't have an an answer to them because based on what I read here in this thirty four paragraph. I, I'm a little confused. I mean, on one hand, he says, if they wanted to enforce it, they are, they could tomorrow, they could do it. On the other hand, he's saying that any mural would be the town's definition of a sign, which means that. Mural, all I have to, all a mural has to do is meet the definition of a sign ordinance. I mean, so. That, that's what he said, it's that, I think that murals need to be treated same as any other sign.
Okay, so. So in that case, say, for instance, if you could have. A wall sign of thirty square feet, then you could have a mural of that size.
But, but it's done a bit, that attracts me over all time because of building.
But I think, but the key is, what Margarita said was, it needs to be done fairly throughout the town, fairly to everybody. Can't just enforce it in one area and not in another.
I think the issue with the Conway sign is exactly what Margarita said, is that they have other murals throughout town. That they didn't enforce as a sign. They enforced this donut mural as a sign because it depicted. Donuts versus a sun and mountains. But because it was a donut and it was a bakery, that's then they consider it a sign. I think the planning board, it's your discretion, whether you want them to be considered signs. Or you want them to just be artistic, you know, depictions of murals or whatever. But I think it's the consistency was the issue in the common case. I think it's your decision, and I do think you probably need some legal guidance from Greg Jason, I think it's probably the right person to give me the answer. But I think it's the planning board's discretion on whether or not you wanna call it a sign. And if you do, then you need to be consistent with sign ordinance. If you don't wanna consider it a sign, then you don't consider it a sign. I mean, did um Lahoots get a sign permit for their mural? Did Lahoots get a sign permit for their?
Yes, it is.
They did?
I signed it.
Okay. So I just think that like, uh uh it. Something needs to be established and I think it just needs to be consistent and taken into consideration for it.
I couldn't agree more, that's what I said, I mean, anything that we do. About these, about murals. If it's if it's a change or a deviation from what we currently have for a sign or. Then the general public should weigh in on it, get a chance to vote on it, so that's not just me, it's my. That that it's not just the board saying, you have this, you can't have that. I think that we're gonna, that we should change our sign ordinance. To include murals. Let let the general public vote on it. And once the general public votes on it, then you have the backing or not of.
Of the town.
Of a town to say, yeah, we want murals, we don't care if they're. This size, we don't care if they're this big, but to me. That's that's the way that I would look at it, then you, you've given the general public a chance to weigh in. You. You created a mural ordinance and everyone knows, we treat it the same. Because the the items are. The checklist items for a mural are here, here and here, or its size or whatever it is. Then everyone knows what to expect. But right now, we don't have anything.
Does that happen at town meeting? That's the only time you get general public to vote?
If you're gonna change an ordinance.
So in like a year?
March, my second, take care of the email. We've been a long time, I mean, we, we didn't set the advice of our attorney, that the town's turning to the way. And I, and we all said, uh, I feel bad for them because they wanna get something going, but. I mean, we do have murals, well, I don't know, is the. White mountain fractions, is that in Woodstock or like?
I mean. According to Jason's letter. He said a mural would meet town's definition of a sign, which means that if someone came in. Wanted to put up a mural. All they have to do is get permission to put up a sign.
But in the beginning, like I said, he said, that said, the order seems so narrow that the town arguably enforces. Its ordinance against levels tomorrow if I wanted to do so, so he's saying that. That the town of Conway had some standing. I mean, so. He's he's saying both, he's saying both sides of this thing to me. I mean, I. That's why I think we should talk to one Zoom and, you know, tell me if there's some questions and we wanna how to. We would like some advices to how to go forward so we can do this fairly and, you know, with everybody who wants help. I'd like to, you know. Not just wait till town meeting time to do it, I think if we have to have. At an addition or an amendment to an ordinance. And I think we should be doing it now, getting input from the general public, you know, and the board to formulate something and have it ready at least for March. March town meeting, so you put this a bit on for all and and have something ready to go. But Jason says you don't need that, all you really need to do is as OJ says them. And we can read it as just so regular as I, I just wanna make sure that everyone playing by the same. So. Right here, that one. I'm not gonna get somebody mad because. This now is considered a sign when it's not, we're gonna have. We're gonna have to argue and fight about, they think it's a sign, they think it's a mural and it's not a sign, so. Maybe it's just a simple definition as OJ said, artistic, what stuff that's artistic versus something as. Graphic, I mean, letters to it, I don't know.
This is what you don't want, this is. It's legal unless it is.
I think if you present a bench trial, it kinda, it honestly, I thought it was more clear than the email. I mean, this is a lot of legal. Really, but I was like, oh, okay, this is what happened, and then when I read his email, I was like, well, that's not clear.
I didn't, I didn't look that. It was, but like I said, does everyone agree with that? We can, if you have any questions, get up to Carol. And she she can make make lists of our questions. And then if we could have Jason zoom in on our next meeting and we can discuss. Possible ways of going forward. This, whether we need to go to a. Addition to our side ordinance, or whether we could use our existing sign ordinance, etc., this, and include murals that way, but. I I I really think we need to talk about that. So everyone agree with that? Anyone disagree?
I agree, I'll get you some questions that I have.
Alright, so we'll do that. Next. A reminder, everyone's signed up for training.
I'm just leaving that on there, just.
Yeah. Rita, did you get many people go through the process of? Do the next Zoom training?
Uh, we did, we had, um, I would say a majority of both the planning and zoning boards attended trainings and they sent emails, so we submitted that on the. Uh, designation application, so.
So I helped with the points.
I I hope so, we haven't received a response back, but I I I'm hoping, I'm hoping it did.
Alright, next. Uh, town manager discussed a planning board regarding the role of both those board members. Moving the appropriate chance of communication with town staff and third party engineers. Figure our current application procedures to ensure consistency and inherent to proper process.
Alright, so. Sure, the majority of you have seen the emails, but they've got the end of April. And I just wanted to come and discuss with the board, um. Kind of roles of individual board members and responsibilities of individual board members and town staff and, um. Kind of proper channels of communication. I feel that recently we've kind of headed down a dangerous path. Um, I was initially contacted, I I initially attempted to be put on the agenda back in May. Um, after the town engineer uh reached out to me as she felt uncomfortable with the frequency and the number of requests. She was reviewing. Um, and she believed uh that some of the town um municipal processes were being ignored. Um, I would also like to take this opportunity to discuss some additional concerns that you have over the last few months regarding town staff. And town applications. Um, just to kind of gain clarity and maybe establish boundaries, um, and get the board's expectations on like. How, um, we wanna move forward, because I do wanna move forward in a productive and kind of efficient and productive manner. Uh, but I think, I think some lines need to be clarified or defined, so, um. Let's start with the town engineer, our new town engineer, Sarah Wordy from the Boston King, is obviously our new town engineer. We've had Rick Horver for fifteen plus years and I feel as if we were probably slightly soiled with Rick Horver. We kind of had him on call all the time, he gave not just. Technical reviews of applications, but he also gave a lot of guidance for reclamation. And I think he was treated more as a member of town staff than actually a consultant that we pay him out of. Um, in the first, after talking to Sarah, in the first week and a half after our initial meeting with Sarah. Um, she received near game calls and it followed eleven hours and roughly fifteen hundred dollars.
Now, these were called?
From you.
From me.
Thanks.
Copy those, Green and Fiss.
Sure, I have the copy of the bill right here.
That'd be great, because I went back through my computer. After you said that, and I went back to my phone. And I have no way of. That kind of. Information.
Okay, like I said, I have the bill right here, you can have a copy of it, um. As a former former municipal employee herself, she recognizes, recognized that that behavior was kind of outside the standard protocol. Um, especially when she was advised in disregard of staff directive. Um.
And what, what way would she advise a disregard?
She was told that, um, I believe that the planner, Carol, had asked her to include some people on emails. In regards to our technical review team. And she was told that you didn't believe that certain members needed to include on those emails and to disregard that.
I asked why it would be included, but that's. I asked why, yeah.
Um, I just think that the town engineer's primary contact should be the town planner and not necessarily the chairman of the board. That is the proper chain of communication. As a member of the board, you're not supposed to be privy to additional information than any other board member is. And being a primary contact or CC on all the technical reviews or emails on town staff. You gain knowledge and potential buy-in that the other members aren't privy to. So, um, I think it's important to remember that Sarah is not a town employee, similar to the town attorney. She has an hourly rate and she contracted to do specific projects and jobs for us.
Contracted, contracted through the planning board, that right?
She, well, I signed.
The planning board voted to.
Planning board voted to hire a third party engineer to review applications.
And I'm remembering the RSA, the RSA states that planning board has the authority to hire this third party review. An engineer, which is what we did. So you tell me that the planning board chair could have signed that contract instead of you, I commend that day?
No, you don't have any fiduciary responsibilities.
Well, well, the company RSA, it says the planning board. We've, that we could assign, every member of the planning board could have signed that contract.
I don't know if that's the RSA.
What says the planning board has the authority?
The planning board can hire a third party engineer to do reviews. But that doesn't give you fiduciary responsibility, um, that those funds come through an E S R agreement that is having them a proper.
And and those funds are only released according to the RSA on the planning boards. Say so, or they're designated.
Sure, yeah, yeah, I believe the planning board's supposed to review the invoices, you're you're correct in that. I don't think.
Yeah, we're supposed to review and approve. We never know.
No, uh, that that is correct, you have never done that, so.
We shouldn't have, yeah, we, it's left in our process.
Well, I think we're digressing a little, I'm just saying that she has an hourly rate. She's not on call staff, she's not a consultant, she doesn't have a retainer. We pay her to do a job and that job is supposed to be to review. And that's there are additional specific task orders that we ask her to put together with a scope of services and whatnot, correct?
We're supposed to have a task for every. Every job she does, and she was supposed to have a task for every job that rated. And this contract, but it never happened.
That is true, but again, as you're saying. Your job to enforce that, so I guess my question would be, why are you not enforcing that?
Didn't realize when I knew passport or until I, until I came up, till we started interviewing other engineers, the task order thing came up. When I started looking at the RSA, just even again the other day, every time I look at it, I find something, it does require a task for, it requires. Expeditions uh from the engineers to be brought forth before the F and N, before the plan.
I don't disagree.
It's not, well. But.
I just think, my point is this, is that she is not there to guide the board through the approval process or assume the roles or to assume the responsibility. Of the town planning staff. We hire her to review the technical merits of applications. She's not a consultant, she's not on call staff member, and I think originally in the beginning of this process, that happens to be used. And I think you just need to reevaluate her role. When it comes to the planning board and who has access to her. Similar to the town attorney, no one's allowed to contact the town attorney. Town department heads unless I give them mission. And so, because they're attempted, and some of the answers we can find on our own, or we can get them in J M A, there are other, there are other avenues. So I just think that the planning board as a whole needs to establish a protocol as to. Where that line is drawn, who has access to the town attorney, I mean, to the town engineer. Should the planning board chair be CC'd on all the technical memorandums? I think that's something that the planning board needs to decide, because I think we're heading, as I said, heading down a dangerous path where we're muddying the waters.
Well, I think that. I think that it's the planning board's responsibility and still role. As a board, follow through on all of it. Uh, but it's, and and any board usually, questions are followed through like the chair. And the chair is the one that can contact, either whether it's legal or whether it's. Engineering or whatever professional services you need. And talking with the past chair, that's, he had done that. On a, you know, on on basis is when whenever he had to do, if he would contact. Uh, talk to Rick Horver, he would talk to. He, he would ask your permission to talk to Jason, if you had to talk to Jason, or if you wanted to manage a municipal station. But I think that the.
You were correct in that, Paul, it was on a very. Human, far between basis, it was for very contentious issues, it wasn't for. Every, it was, it wasn't on a weekly or a daily basis.
When I was talking to her, I documented exactly what I was talking to her for. And it it was all relevant stuff that that she was more than willing to talk to me about. You know, and so so that I could gain clarity.
I mean, of course she was willing to talk to you about it, alright, it's probably an established relationship. With a new community that she just got hired to work for, whether or not it was appropriate. Whether or not it was appropriate to spend eleven hours and eight days on a phone with her, I think is a different thing out here.
Well, I don't believe it was eleven hours and eight days. I certainly, I certainly like to see it, because I couldn't find it on my phone and I couldn't find it on my computer either all that time. Because when you said it was almost daily, she said it was almost daily, I couldn't find it.
I'm just saying, if our new town engineer reaches out saying she's uncomfortable, I think we need to address that. And I think you need to take it into consideration that maybe. That, that maybe.
I, I think she needs to figure out who's working, she's working for the planning board. Okay, that's what she's working for, it's the planning board.
She just hired to review the technical merits of site plan and subdivision applications.
Correct, but she does, does that under, she does that under the planning board, the planning board. She doesn't do it under the administration, you or anybody else, she does that under the planning board, it's their purview. That's why the planning board voted to hire another engineer, we did that, I think.
That's not what we're doing.
Like I said before, Green, you stepped in here and you helped out when permits weren't, weren't getting out the, out the door. You've done a great job of that. The planning board should take over and. Do their job and they should be the ones that talk to the engineer. They should be the ones that control how, how it works, not the town manager. I, I think sometimes you get confused about. Where town manager's responsibility is in, in respect to the planning board. Okay, I mean, you. I asked Carol, for example, so I'm the chair, I asked Carol, I found the whole board, asked Jason to come on Zoom meet. We get responsible, you, because you talked to Jason, why didn't Carol talk to Jason? She works, she, she, she was the one that the board asked to do that, why didn't that happen?
Well, I don't know how it was communicated to Carol, I know how this.
I'm telling you how it was communicated to Carol.
I was told on Friday that we needed guidance from, from Jason in regards to the Conway sign decision. I said, I'm sending Jason an email about some other things, would you like me to ask Jason for some guidance on the Conway sign thing? That's what I did, that's what you got.
Well, we had asked to have, I mean, in Zoom, this, what we got was a memo that to me is confusing at best.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Let me just go back to the third-party engineer.
Okay.
The planning board has the authority to hire a third-party engineer to review the technical merits of site plan and subdivision applications. That's not what happened. So if we want to do that, it's appropriate, we should be doing that, that's the whole point. I don't believe that's what was conducted in the weeks after the house there. So, on to my next one.
Well, wait, no, 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 oh, let's, let's figure out where your items are going, so you don't. Get one into the other. I mean. It says in the RSA that. The planning board does have the ability, and I'm gonna read it here. There you go. From some of six seventy-three sixteen, each board may also contract with planners, engineers, architects, and other consultants for services as it may require. It does not say that anything about technical merit trends, it says.
The third-party review.
Oh, I'm reading, I'm reading Staff Finance, six seventy-three sixteen. Okay, and it specifically says. Each board may also contract with planners, engineers, architects, and other consultants for such services as it may require. Doesn't say anything about that. It also says of money, that the finances shall be paid out for the municipal treasure. Only upon board of the local land use board or is designated agent for such purpose. And so it's the, it's the planning board that, that's supposed to sign the bills. The bills is supposed to come in by a third-party engineer under six seventy. Six seventy, six four, I believe.
I think you're taking six seventy-three sixteen slightly out of context.
Well, you can say that.
You're saying that, yeah, it's saying that the planning board can hire traffic engineers or other engineers to help them do things.
We can hire a planner. What it said.
No, because I have clarification from the attorney on that and we'll speak to that later, because that's one of my discussion points as well.
Well, we.
If you want to go down that path, we can talk about it.
You can hire, now, I'm not saying we can hire a town, we could hire a subcontractor to do planning. For planning, if we want to, I don't think that's the role we want to develop.
No.
But, planning board could hire a subcontractor such as M R I.
Correct.
Such as North Country Council, we could hire them if we had decided to.
Yeah.
Who want to do planning services for the planning board.
That, you're absolutely right.
Okay, so.
That's, we'll can hire a, a surveyor, a contractor, someone that. A master planner to do that, yeah, I think that's not what we're talking, what we're talking about here.
And what are you talking?
We're talking about you with the chairman taking it upon yourself to contact our newly hired third-party engineer. To brainstorm ideas or to whatever it may be, talk about potential projects that have yet to be vetted by the board as full. And I think that's the difference.
There are always gonna be. Questions that you have that can't get answers in-house and that we, you're gonna have to go to the engineer to do it.
What is appropriate chain of communication for that? Wouldn't it be that you discuss that at, at the board as a whole? And then the board directs the town planner to reach out to the town engineer to discuss those things?
Green, I directed, we directed the town planner to ask Jason to come on Zoom and we didn't get that.
I'm just saying.
I'm just saying.
I just think appropriate lines of communication need to be established, that who is the primary point of contact for the third-party engineer? And stereotypically, it's not the chairman of the board.
Well, so. Well, that's in your opinion.
It's.
That's in your opinion.
Standard protocol is, it's a municipal employee or the planning board is designated, it's very, I've never seen the chairman be that person.
Doesn't mean it hasn't happened, doesn't mean it doesn't need to have to be, right?
Do we agree though that, that. When that's done, and whether that's done by the planning board chair or the planner or the town manager, that it's done through a consensus or vote of the planning board?
I don't think you can say that, because. There will be times when there's questions raised and. You're gonna go wait till, till you get to a meeting, OJ, if you do that. I can tell you, I can, well, 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 let me finish off here, I can tell you, I can tell you one you recently did. When, when I asked the board about whether or not they entered an agreement with Woodstock. Where they were gonna try and run their water plant, you said, well, now we had talked to them like that. When I talked to Jack Daly the next day, Jack said, Paul. Yours, yours was the first time I'd heard anything about it when you mentioned it. So don't tell me that the board is slapping you, don't sit there and go do a bunch of stuff. Without involving the other board members. Walk on, tell what, I've seen you in town hall talking to bell first, I, I mean, on your own, I mean, this is not. I'm not looking to create some sort of monster, all I'm telling you is that, that it. I was voted into B chair. I'm not trying to take undue advantage of the chair, but I do take it seriously and when, when there's, when I have questions, I get answers still. Go ahead.
So as you know, two members of the board meet about town business, it has to be done in public. So, so.
Has to be done in public.
Correct. So Jack Daly and I can't go secretly meet with someone from Woodstock to talk about this. As it happened in that particular case. I was at a meeting with a Woodstock selectant and it wasn't a selectance meeting, it was just another meeting. When the question or the issues brought up and if we stated that, that at this point they're not interested in. Contracting Lincoln to run their water. So when you asked if we've. Drawn up, it's like, when, when. When one of us has been told that it's not of interest, I didn't bring it up at a select was meeting.
But two of you knew about it, you knew about it, Tammy knew about it, Jack didn't even know about it.
I don't, I don't know how Tammy knew about it.
Yeah.
Well, you said it that night, the meeting, so the two of you, you told me that night, I asked a question that OJ and Tammy had discussed.
I think we're getting sidetracked here, I think we're.
So, so.
Anyway.
To go back, no, no, wait, to go back to your real question. It is rare, rare, that I initiated a call with Jason and it has never happened that I've initiated a call with Ray Corver. And, you know, have I talked to Jason? Yes, but it's used to respond to an email or, or a telephone message. Where I needed to provide him with an answer or information or document, something about a specific case.
Can I ask, if you regretted, Marina, to contact Jason or, or the, or the engineer without asking the other two if, if she should do that?
I, but I can remember, I mean, usually the board discusses that and the board directs Marina. Or.
Or I take it upon myself.
Or you take it upon yourself because of an email or a question or something that comes up and, and she does that. I, I, I guess, I'm concerned, again, with, yes, we have the right to hire a third-party reviewer. There's no question, we've been doing that for years and it's been Ray Corver, now we have someone else. Doing that or sharing that, I'm not even sure how that's, what, what's happening with that. But either way, when that has happened for the last, how many years of Ray? Right, this is the project, it's a subdivision or it's a site plan review or whatever. And he goes up and he talks with usually the other engineer. He may have questions or requests for, for, for cattle, he may. Talk to Marina for some, but, but they go up and do a third-party review, it's not with. Representing the, the other party. We hire them to do that on behalf of the town. I think when the planning board gets involved in that back and forth with the engineers. It either has to be everyone, so that we all have equal information, or no one. If one planning board member has access to, you know. That communication going back and forth, it, it can, it definitely has the possibility to create a bias.
How's that? Explain something.
By knowing more information that the rest of the board doesn't is, is, is considered a bias in the rules of conduct of a, of a board.
Well, I'd like to see that right first, but second of all, to, to say that. You would be the only one getting that information is wrong, because, for instance, when I talked to Sarah about. Woodstock Kings technical memo, so their task was, did you, I mean, I've got them all written down here. Talked about her hourly rate, because she wanted to know what the best way was, because the discussions prior to that had been with, had been with the board chair. You know, but when, when we were talking with her, she said, Paul, what do you think about this? What do you think about that? And, and I, I gave her, I gave her answers, you know, and I said, this is what I would do. I said, but I think we have to hit the board on that. So then you bring it back to the board, but it's gotta funnel through, through somebody. They, they, you can't, for example, if she's saying.
You're absolutely right, Paul, that it needs to funnel to someone, but I don't think you're the appropriate person, the chairman is not the appropriate person.
Why should you?
The, the town planner.
Should me? Come on, we can't even.
Let me, let me give you an example of how it creates bias, right? Because this is also part of my bullet, down a little bit further below, but.
By the way, but I, I, I want to interrupt. If we don't get to all of your stuff tonight.
I only have four things.
Okay, but if we don't, we'll, we'll continue on to another meeting, but, but I want to cover them one at a time, I don't want to jump back and forth.
Okay, well, let me show you an example of how it created bias and how it also kind of contradicts or creates kind of contention or. In-house.
Okay.
The review process for the height, you were CC'd on all those technical meetings. Carol, to not put the heights up to the second technical memory. Correct.
Correct.
That violates state law. State law says that the date we get an application in, we have thirty days to put it on the checklist. Whether we have one piece of paper from the applicant, the application alone, alone, or we have forty documents from the applicant. Including everything in the checklist or one single piece of paper. So you know that we haven't received a second response to comments yet and directing Carol to take the heights off the agenda. One, not only was going to violate state law, but two, you already had a bias in your mind that they had sixty comments and they had seventy comments. They can't be read in the current time, that's how a bias was created. And that's why the chairman should not be the point of contact when it comes to the technical.
If you remember in talking to Sarah, when I first sat on, the only. P R T committee meet that I went to, Sarah said that in some instances in different towns. Yeah. When they submit their information, there are a bunch of thirty, forty, twenty, whatever the comments are, whatever that number is that they choose. That they hand back to them, say, don't, don't come in until you're ready. We're not here to, to fill up, fill this thing up for you. And to me, that, that came from Sarah and you were there to.
I was there and.
You were there when she said that and.
Contact that after, that's whether you're accepting an application as complete or you're deciding whether it should be.
The only one accepting an application as complete is me.
That is correct.
So.
Oh, by state law, you have to put an application on an agenda within thirty days of proceeding. Whether we have everything that makes that checklist complete or we have only one document that makes that.
That doesn't make sense, I would like to see.
I have it right here, I've created a packet for all of you that outlines the state's rules of procedures when it comes to applications. I think it would be great if we all familiarized ourselves with it, because I think we are tippy-toeing on the lines of violating some state laws that could. Get us in trouble in the future, similar to the checklist thing. We're, we're not gonna go down that rabbit hole yet, but that's, I just wanted to give you an example of how, I think.
You mean to tell me.
The point of contact for the, for the engineer should be the town planner, the designated of the planning board.
I'm sorry, say that again?
The point of contact for the third-party engineer should be the, a designated of the planning board, AKA the town planner.
I don't think so.
Well, I think that needs to be a planning board.
I would, I would agree with that. You got, if, if more you want to say about that?
Not, not, not on that point.
So the point you want, the point you want clarified is who is the person, agent, whatever, to contact. The town engineer with any questions relating to an application.
Yes.
And I think it should be. The chair and the town planner. So that the planning board is not left out of it, because there are a lot of times when the planning board gets left out of those comments and what things happen. I mean, we get, as you well know, we have land use permits that have been issued by code enforcement and we have land enforcement. Land use permits have been issued by you, well, even the planning board knows what's going on. Okay, we need a way, it's the planning board's responsibility, it's not yours, it's not Sean's, it's planning board's.
We're getting off track here.
Yeah, that's an applesauce, you're talking about the same thing, it's something you have, but you're.
You're talking about the same thing, it's something you have, you're talking about land use.
But what I, the planning should have a representative, if it's me, Mike, Steve, Joe, it, it should have somebody. What are you laughing at?
I just.
What are you laughing at? Yo, if you're laughing at something, go ahead, tell us. You don't want to. That I think it should be a planning board representative and the town planner, whoever that is. I don't think it should be.
As far as what? As far as what? As the technical review though?
No, as, as far as when questions need to be asked of the, your question was about third party engineer. I think it should be, I think it should be run through Carol and a representative on the planning board.
I mean, I guess, I guess I'm getting confused because I think we're kind of like intermingled things. When it comes to the technical review of applications, I don't believe a planning board ever should be involved in those conversations. As I just shown an example of how it creates bias. When it comes to you all deciding on doing a traffic study for something, another property in town or an area in town or an individual or a project that's outside of the application process? Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's a bad idea to maybe have a board member involved in those conversations. But when it comes to the application process, I feel like that's different. If the planning board is creating a project for themselves that they want to investigate more, such as the master plan, such as traffic analysis for the town, something that the planning board has agreed upon, that it's a worthwhile project that, that they want to undertake, then yes, I don't see anything wrong with them being, having a representative from the planning board be involved in those conversations with the third party engineer or a traffic analysis or whatnot. But I think when it comes to the applications that are coming before you, that you need to approve, that you're not supposed to be having any privy to prior to it coming before the board is called, I don't think that person should be the chairman or man.
Well, according to my understanding, when, when you, when a, a, if you're talking about the TRT, looking at stuff and talking to engineers, that's supposed to be done at a public forum in, in a public site. I mean, there's supposed to be notices, a butters, public, we ever done that?
I don't think a butter notices, and to be honest, Paul, we don't really have TRT meetings anymore. Because I feel like the TRT team has been. When you want us to be involved, you want us to be involved, but when you don't want us to be involved, you don't want us to be involved. So it's very inconsistent about what our role is, so we pretty much have to stop.
One of the things I was going to talk to you about, and, and I tried to talk about before, I, I think that TRT should be, should be changed to the application review committee. I think that their emphasis should be on making sure the application paperwork that's submitted is complete in its entirety. And I think that, that should be sent to the engineer, whoever that is, DNK, uh, KB partners, whoever. And then they review it. And then from there, they're, they create a technical memo. But just so you know, I mean, a technical review team still needs, is considered a public body, they must comply with RSA ninety-one A by posting notices, notifying the butters and so forth.
No, butter, a butter notification?
Oh, oh, yeah. And, and in this, in this company, NHNA, Charles Powell.
I, I would like to see that because I think, I think we might be confusing like design review with technical review. With our tech, with our in-house technical.
My technical review team still need, because I asked a question.
I would like to see the question you posed. Because sometimes I feel like you pose questions.
I asked.
That prompts an answer.
I asked a question that was straight out of, straight out of the RSA.
Can we go back to the third party engineer? And I would like.
You.
I mean, you don't have to, yes, vote on it this evening, you don't, but I would like the board to address it.
Okay.
Either tonight or at a future meeting as to who should be the point of contact when it comes to third party reviews for subdivision and site plan.
When the, when the application comes in or after, before it goes to the engineer?
I mean, what's the difference? The timeline's the same.
I saw, I needed a little clarification on here, right? You said, when someone comes up to the window, he hands you a packet of papers. You've only got X amount of days to do that. And my understanding was that if it's not complete, you don't have to accept it.
Paul, it's RSA six seventy-four four. You don't have to accept it at your public hearing.
But you don't have to accept that at the window.
Yes, you do. I have, I have.
Uh, that, that's fine. I, I'm just asking for clarification. I've never heard that. And when Sarah was, Sarah from Dubois and King was talking, she said.
You're talking about further down the line. When an application comes in, if, if we have an application, right, we have a formal application on town letterhead that identifies all the questions we're looking for in the application process. When we receive that from an applicant, again, RSA, whatever I just said, six seventy-four. I have it here for you. We have thirty days to put that on the agenda. And whether or not we ask them for more information, whether or not we say, okay, well, we have questions or you didn't submit this or you didn't submit that, that's all part of the application checklist, that's why we have an application checklist we can ask them for. We cannot deny their right to go on the agenda just because they don't submit. Again, it's in the OSI handbook that I printed out for you.
I, I certainly would like to see that, but my understanding is all of that, and with, and it comes with Sarah's comments that if, if, if someone brings in an application and say they don't complete, say there's fifty items on the checklist and say they, they only supply ten of them, you have the right to hand it right back to them and say, hey, wait a minute here, you got to comply with all fifty.
I think that's further along down the process.
It, Sarah said, you could do it right at the window. Wow, now, and, and, and when she said that, I took it from her being an experienced planner, like personally, because she was a planner and another down.
Sure, well, and that's why I think it's, would be the move the board to kind of familiarize themselves with the, the state process, you know, because the state out, we don't have to re, we don't have to reinvent the wheel, the state lays it out for us. Like I said, I think we're getting further down the line as far as whether you accept it as incomplete or whether you deny it with prejudice or whether you say, you know, I think, I think we're getting further down the line.
Well, because, well, well, we are, but we aren't because the last thing we want to do is accept an app, an application that is not complete or doesn't have enough information. And then everyone starts, Carol looks at it, the engineer looks at it, the planning board starts to look at it. You know, and, and it's, you don't want to do that unless you have all that information. Why would you want to put everybody through that without an applicant having submitted all the information that they need?
I think we're getting confused here.
Correct.
The losses, I understand the losses, we have to put it on the agenda.
Mm-hmm.
Doesn't say we have to accept it.
Absolutely not.
So it's on the agenda and we get here and they have no drawings, no maps, no.
Then you say, you say, oh, we're voting to not accept it as complete because it doesn't meet our checklist, that's why we have a checklist.
And this.
I'm, I'm sorry, go, go, we're doing this just, uh, but.
In the same way, if, if you get an application or get an application and go through it and it's missing key components, granted, we still have thirty days to put them on the agenda, but would you typically get in touch with that applicant and say, you know, you didn't do this and we know that the planning board is not going to accept this as complete unless you supply it. And then either give them the chance to, to, um, submit whatever material is missing or the chance to withdraw. They always said they can't get it because their engineer is busy or whatever. Can they withdraw their application knowing that it won't be, um, accepted?
Yes.
And then we submit it?
Yes.
Okay, so there's other avenues that can be dealt with. Um, but we can still legally put it on the agenda within thirty days. And if it hasn't been withdrawn and it's not complete, you vote not to accept it as complete.
So you're telling me that we, we have to accept these applications?
No, you don't have to accept, you have to put them on the agenda.
We have to put, we have to put them on the agenda and we have to meet on something that if, if it's not, doesn't supply all the information?
That's absolutely correct. It says, in the event the applicant disagrees with the designees, the planners, recommendation that an application is not complete because you're supposed to get a recommendation from the planner, whether it's complete or not, or made that determination yourself, and declines to submit the requested items, the application must be placed on the agenda. You have thirty days to determine whether that application is complete or not. It has to be put on the agenda. And then you get to the meeting and you decide, it's publicly noticed with the butters, and you decide this is incomplete, we're denying it for the same reason. It's foolish of the applicant to do so, but you still are legally required to do so.
I just think.
It doesn't matter what you think, Paul, that's state law.
I understand what you're saying. But I don't think it's fair to, go ahead, Jacob.
You know, this, I've been on the planning board for a long time, you have, you really have, um, I, I think it would be helpful, even for those who are not here, to have someone come in and go through rules procedure or standard procedure or whatever you want to call it, of how.
We're happy.
It definitely is happening as we go.
Are you setting the lobby?
Yes.
And so.
I'll tell the end.
But, but is, is there a goal to teach, to, to talk about rules of procedure?
I don't think, I don't think the goal is planning board one-on-one. I don't think that's the goal. I mean, I think it could be hanged that way if you want a planning board one-on-one. But I don't think that's what it was for. I think it was.
Well, I think it was very basic, um, because I have new members on the CDA and I have new members on the planning board, so it, it is supposed to be pretty basic. Um, it is supposed to be basic.
When we put that little block in here and sends the thing to determine what it was, I thought it said that it's going to deal with something anyway, but that's why, because I obviously thought that, I still think that it's unfair to the planning board to be, to have to be on an application that does, does give you all the information the first way in.
I don't necessarily disagree that you may feel that it's unfair and that it may be a waste of time.
But the law says.
But that's what the law says. Similar to when it comes to the checklist, you cannot deny an application. It provides everything that our checklist doesn't need to have.
I agree.
Complete, so if you go down the checklist and it's four copies of this, check, four copies of that, check, we need electronics, check, check, check. And they have provided every single thing on that checklist, you're not even supposed to discuss the technical merits. Like at the last meeting when you were discussing parking and you were discussing snow, you're not supposed to discuss one of the technical merits before you decide whether that application is complete or not. You're not even supposed to have a lot of information.
You're supposed to, you're supposed to accept the application as complete before you open your public hearing.
Before you discuss any of the technical merits.
Before you have any public hearing, supposed to that, but you can, during the time you're just checking the, uh, the checklist, you can take public comment. It cannot be at a, you cannot call it a public hearing. And there's two, you can actually do it underneath two, I actually asked Jason the same thing. You can do it under two things. One, you can do it under conceptual review.
Oh, yeah.
Or you.
Or just a pain review.
But.
I'm aware.
And, and, and you should do that. You should allow for that to do it. We should be doing, we should be doing a conceptual review for all of these things because it allows the public to comment, it doesn't start to thaw because you haven't, you, you haven't done the, the checklist yet. So conceptual review is really the way in which you, you preliminarily look and, and you can take public comment.
I, I, I don't disagree, Paul, but again, that is conceptual review and design review. That is not during the application completion.
I understand.
So, it, and again, as you can read it here, it says, um, before a planning board can take any act, action on the application, the, the complete package required information is defined in the subdivision and site plan review regulations must be submitted to the board at the meeting.
Correct.
It is appropriate for the board to not engage in discussions over the completeness of the application with the applicant before the public hearing is over. That's also why I think it's inappropriate for a board member to be on the technical review emails discussing whether the application is complete or not, or whether that will be accepted or anything. Because they're not supposed to have that information individually. You're supposed to decide that as, as a board, at a board meeting. It says the board's familiarity, I'm going to have a hard time saying that word this evening, with the details of the application upon acceptance may be minimal. You're not supposed to be privy to that information. You're supposed to do things systematically, step by step. Another reason why I don't think the chairman should be the point of contact for the third party reviewer when it comes to site plan. Again, I encourage you, all of you, to read through this, like just get your bearings on how we should be moving forward because it might, I think it will just make you all have more productive meetings and more consistent in your approach when it comes to the evaluation.
In all fairness to what you've submitted, I, I would hope that we would review it and then have some more further discussion on it.
That would be, yeah.
I'll look at it and see what kind of questions I have. But I, I don't think we should make that determination.
You don't have to, I'll just.
I mean, but I, I want to make sure that we do it the right way, but I also want to make sure that the planning board has representation in all of the areas that it can, and that it does its job.
I don't disagree, but I just think we need to not blur the line when it comes to violating state laws. It could open us up for retention laws.
Well, we haven't had any yet.
But what? What?
Steve?
Uh, why, why don't we accept something with conditions that's not complete? Do we shoot this over the foot?
Well, I would still.
Places.
I think, I think when you approach an application process, I think the first thing you should be doing on a first agenda is reviewing the checklist and accepting if that application is. Not if there are conditions of approval, not if you want the parking to change or not if you want the configurations to change. There should be no discussion on those technical merits. The parking, the heights, the, the signage, the lighting, there should be zero discussion in regards to that before you accept the application.
There are, there are, there is a couple of sections. One, I can think of right away, it's that state permits, if they're not, if they're not there at the time with the application being submitted, you can.
You can't deny.
You can't.
That is.
Because of state permits.
That's not the technical merit of the application. I would say that's the middle of the checklist.
Right, but it's still, when you're looking at checklist, the checklist says that the state permit is going to, and, and if they haven't, obviously you can't say this is not.
No, well, let's use the last meeting as an example. Last meeting, last meeting, before you went through the checklist to do, to make the decision, you were on schedule. Last meeting, you, and this isn't the first time it's happened, you discussed the technical merits of the application. You discussed the parking and pulling back out on South Peak Road and you discussed a couple of other things. Those are the technical merits of the application before you even accepted the application as complete. And then there was an argument or some contention over whether the application was complete or not because there wasn't a certain acreage or something put on one of the.
Well, I'll agree, but that would be something.
Yep, and I believe that that could have been challenged legally if the planning board works to deny that application as incomplete because it was submitted. Whether or not it met your standards is different. Whether or not you want to make changes, whether or not you're going to make conditions of approval that add the acreage to those plans that changes the layout or changes the parking plan is very different. So I think it just needs to be, I think you need to approach these projects a little bit more systematically.
So what in your opinion, I mean, an applicant comes in and they're asking us to check, they're coming in through the, through the checklist. Going out through the checklist. You're saying that we can't ask.
For additional things on that checklist?
Let me finish.
Yeah.
You're saying that we can't ask the town engineer, whoever that is, whether they have reviewed this and do they have any additional questions? Or have they gotten all the information? Because how are we supposed to make that determination unless we've hired a third party review? And if the third party review is reviewing the application as well, you're saying a third party review does not review, does not.
She's reviewing, the third party reviewer, I shouldn't say she, sorry, Corver sometimes too, is reviewing the technical merits of the application. Again, the technical merits. Is it meeting our stormwater definition? Is it meeting our setback? Is it meeting our height? Is it meeting our stormwater definition, is it meeting our setback, is it meeting our height ordinances, is it meeting our lighting, our signage, whatever that may be. It's your responsibility as a planning board to say, look at your checklist. And look at how the items that you were requiring on that checklist, if you want your checklist to be more detailed and defined, then, then you, you have every right to do so. If you want acreages and certain things on the maps, on certain parts of the checklist, you have the right to change your checklist and amend it to. You've made those specific things, but you can't ask for anything more, and it's not the engineer's responsibility to make that recommendation for you. It's your responsibility as a board to say, okay, this is our checklist, did we receive everything on the checklist?
But how are we supposed to know whether the applicant has submitted all necessary information? To, to make a determination on technical merits of an application.
You're not supposed to be reviewing the technical merits of it. When you're accepting.
I'm not saying we're reviewing, whether or not they, whether or not they've submitted the enough information.
I think you should review your own checklist, and I think you're all pretty intelligent people and can decide whether or not they submitted it to you or not.
Do a retaining wall or stormwater management, you think we're gonna be able, we're gonna be able to look what they've submitted, so. Whether it's sufficient or not, is that what you're saying?
You're. I think you're, you're going down a rabbit hole.
If they, if they submit something that says this is, it's going on our management plan.
Correct.
If our engineer looks at it and says, this is the absolute fault fit and it's not gonna work. That's the technical review.
Oh, for example, in the last minute.
Oh, it's, did they submit it? Did you get a survey plan? Yes. Did you get a retaining wall plan? Yes. Doesn't necessarily mean that it's gonna meet all town regulations, doesn't necessarily mean that you're going to approve it. Cause you're not gonna approve it unless the town engineer says, yes, it meets the town regulations.
We don't have to know if it's gonna work or not.
You don't have to know if it's gonna work or not to accept the application.
After the town engineering gives it, I wanna know if it's gonna work or not.
But I think, I think we're just getting sick, I think we're not, like I said, I think we need to systematically approach things. You don't, just like you said, Steve, you don't need to know if it's gonna work on paper, you just need to know that you received it.
So then. During the last meeting. But, uh, it was, uh, we were talking about, we were talking about, we were talking about retaining walls. It said design things will be submitted during your lane use permit application, not at this stage. I thought that all that information had to be submitted prior to. Accepted application. They, they haven't even submitted it yet.
Oh, what is on your site plan application checklist? Okay, so if it doesn't require retaining wall planning. Then you can require.
Just. Then we require a deficiency in the plan. I'm just saying, here, Eric said that they didn't have to solve.
As part of the process, you probably should review your site plan review checklist, you probably should review your subdivision checklist. Make yourself familiar with them, so when they come in front of you and you wanna make any changes to them, and you want one. Like you want to make those stricter, or you want to make them less restrictive, make those changes as a whole of the board, but I think.
Well, we did, we actually did. And I had asked, when we went through the stuff for the water, uh, regulations. And it was brought up by, I think Dave about the heights. One of the things I had asked, and we had talked about it, is to make sure that on the checklist. There was an item that says, there's supposed to be a note on a plan that said that the applicant was, had to. Meet the requirements for the town of Lincoln's water sewer regulations, it's not on our checklist, I still have yet to. Find out why it's not on the checklist, but we, we'd asked for it to be there, so that. That, that made the, as you said, it made the applicant responsible for. For checking out the town's water and sewer regulations and making sure that, yes, this is the type of hydrant that we're gonna put in. This is the type of sewer lines used, but, but that, but that never made the checklist either. You know, and I don't know why, but I guess we'll have to.
Well, I, I don't know either, I mean, you as a board are accountable and responsible for. What you put out there for your application, and what you put out there for your checklist, so I would say you should probably follow up on.
Are you talking about the looping? The looping is on the checklist.
It wasn't, no. See, it was, it was a two-part thing, it wasn't just a loop. It was the looping, and, and what forgot, forgot was that they were supposed to, um, comply. With all of the town of Lincoln's water and sewer regulations. That's in the town's water and sewer regulations. That dictates what they're supposed to put around, what they're supposed to, their fixture counts, their, uh, how many gallons per minute they're supposed to have for their water. Bosses, um, the, the type of hydrants, the type of, where thrust blocks are, where, I mean, type of. Water line they're supposed to use, that's all in those checklists, and we had asked for that to be put on there, as well as the looping, because the looping was.
Well, I would suggest at a future meeting, you know, you, subdivision and site plan checklist. You know, and, and, and again, now that you have a meeting schedule where the applicant is not coming in. The following two weeks to coming back in a month rather, you know, to give time for everyone to do their reviews, you should have meetings that should be. Workshop meetings, I know you and I have discussed this before, where you are cleaning up, because you guys are a very active planning board, you always have new applications becoming before. That's not slowing down anytime soon, we've just hit the tip of the iceberg when it comes to. You should have the kind of cleanup meetings, trying to do this housekeeping stuff, because if you don't, it just gets pushed to the bottom and it just gets forgotten about, and that. No one's fault, but it doesn't help us be consistent. And transparent and clear with the applicant, these are our rules, this is how we follow them, this is what we do. It gets confusing, and it just money the law, so.
So I think we should have a. Think we should review this, and you gave us tonight, David, you gave us tonight. Then we should have a, a work session and discuss how we wanna have. And that. Your point clarifies of who, who the point of contact is. With the engineer, whoever it is, whether it's the boss and king, or whether it's, uh, baby birds. So, we'll put that, we'll get it, Carol, can you? Do a list of things that we wanna discuss at a work session. And that will be, that will be.
And I can give you my thoughts from this evening, so. I have two more things I'd like to discuss, okay? And I know you're gonna feel like I'm calling you out on a lot of this stuff. You, you'll call me on it too, so I know it's difficult, um, but, okay. From early March to early May, town staff received over eighty emails. Um, we've also received many phone calls and text messages after business hours. I find that this number of emails to be accepted and beyond the scope of regular business communications, this also doesn't account for the numerous. Um, I understand as the chairman, you. Are responsible for preparing the agenda and some of these communications are warranted and necessary. Um, but I also feel that. You, sometimes. You have a tendency to assign tasks or give directives to town staff. Or most basically the town engineer without consulting the board. Um, and then I have to step in, and then. Which causes contention amongst you and I, and we've had very heated exchanges, both over email and over the telephone. I think that we can have a better communication style, and I think that. Things should be discussed at a board level before directives are given to town staff. Because then it causes you and me to go back and forth, but I don't think anyone's gonna be surprised by that. Um, we both like to have an opinion, and so, and I take accountability in that too, um, but I do feel that. In two months, eighty emails is a lot. Lastly, unless you wanna talk on that.
First of all, I take the, the position of chair very seriously. I wanna be, I wanna be informed. As much as I want to inform everybody on this board, I want the most information they can have. As soon as they can have it, so they can make informed decisions. And it doesn't matter to me whether it's one email, one phone call, or five hundred. Doesn't matter, your numbers, but, but dates don't matter. I'm all about getting the right information, so that I understand it and I can convey that to, to the board. Okay, we can't have five board members, like Carol, or going to anyone else and asking questions. They should be funneled through the chair, yeah, that's gonna mean there's a lot more communications. Let me finish, I let you finish. That means there's gonna be a lot more communications happening. When I, in the past, when I had issues, I issued, when I had questions, or I wanted to get some more information. I called Jimmy, and I said, hey, I'd like to have some more information about this, Jimmy would get it. Or I said, I would like to see this on the agenda, as, as a planning board member, he would put it on the agenda. When there have been people that were not present, sometimes we've waited and, and we've had meetings when they could be here. So, and, and I realize that's not what you're talking about, but. The chair. In, in my opinion. My opinion, you know, if, if I'm gonna sit here, I really don't care whether I sit here or not. I don't like, doesn't wanna sit here full-time and do it. I know Steve doesn't wanna sit here and full-time and do it, I know Joe doesn't, and OJ can't. You know, so I'm trying to do the best I can do, but. You know as well as I do, I'm very. No, I'm very particular. I'm very thorough, I do my homework, I need, I ask a lot of questions, and I look for a lot of answers. All that information that I have here is because I went and researched, I sure as hell didn't get it from any of the staff. It's pretty, you know, sometimes it's pretty hard to get that information. Finish, let me finish. Jimmy and I came in on numerous stations and talked to you about staff, we couldn't get this, we couldn't get that. Still never gets fixed, never gets fixed. So, you know, yeah, sometimes there is a few more than they need to be. But we don't have the ability to make your staff. To pay anything that we wanna do, including answer questions. Okay, and you haven't make it, made that any better.
That's your opinion. Do you not think there should be professional boundaries?
Describe professional boundaries.
Do you think sending text messages to town staff at nine o'clock at night is appropriate?
They don't have to answer them.
It doesn't matter, you were the chairman of the board. You're supposed to be able to understand boundaries, these are people who dedicate their lives to this community, we're coming here for, we spent more time.
Answer that question at nine o'clock. It's when I review. I know, you can put that on record, because when I'm sitting at my houses, after dinner or whatever, and I'm reviewing something, and I go, oh, I got one. I need to ask this question. I go and ask it before I forget it, I'm sixty-nine years old, you know, sometimes I don't remember at all. So what I do is, I ask, strike while the iron's hot, you know, I, I go and I ask those questions. I'm not saying that they gotta get on their computer and insert right then. That's really quick, what? I don't call them at nine o'clock and say, hey, can you answer the phone, I mean, that's quick, call them at nine o'clock and look the best.
You haven't sent text messages to employees after hours?
I said, I haven't called them.
A text is different.
I don't think much, who, who's texting?
I'm just saying.
I'm trying to think who's, who's calling them, I get that, I don't think I have anyone's text message. Uh, I may have Sean's.
Well, and Carol's.
I don't have her.
Yeah, but, I, I'm not a texter, so I don't. You did send, you sent me some texts.
Because clearly, I feel like people might be stressed with the, the abundance of communication. So how could we make both parties happy where you can throw all your questions? Maybe you schedule a text or have it in the morning. During operational hours where you start your notes in your phone, tell your questions in your email later, so that staff has their own time. And they don't feel overwhelmed on off-hours.
It's pretty easy. All I have to do is answer during workouts, don't matter what time I send them, just answer them during workouts.
I mean, you could send them during workouts too.
It's not just my stuff, if my phone as well, it helps works with everybody. When I walk into the building and I open my inbox and I see four emails and follow-up in from the night before. It's overwhelming.
Four emails overwhelming? Four emails, one person overwhelming, you're in the wrong job.
Well, I don't think I'm in the wrong job, I think I'm in the perfect job, um, and I think there's a lot of people who agree. Um, I just think that it can be excessive, and I think you don't even realize, or maybe you don't care how that comes across to town staff. But it, it overwhelms.
So me sending emails at eight o'clock later, eight o'clock later on Saturday when I'm looking at nap.
Getting eighty emails in a two-month period of time is overwhelming.
That's, two-month period of time is sixty days, that's one point two emails a day.
Problem though with employees.
Thirty days a week, I mean, thirty days a month. It's acceptable, you can, you can have a different opinion, I didn't expect to change your mind on things, I don't think I will be able to.
Gave me this thing tonight, you know, I, I agreed to read it and go, look. You tell me how many times I've been in talking to you, Tipperary. And Tipperary, I wanna work with, not against, and you said same thing to me, but all I get is. Feedback and fight.
You always talk about wanting to work together, and so do I, but I think your actions speak louder than your words. And I also think that when you make personal digs. Is when things cross the line, and it's hard to work with someone, predominantly and professionally, when he wants the personal. And I think sometimes.
There's enough that to go around.
And that's kinda gonna be my last comment, because it kinda goes hand in hand with this.
You, you make those personal digs about some of your employees, I, you know, it, it's. There's enough to go around for him.
My last comment that I'm likely leaving with this evening is, I feel as if my role as town manager, um, is not respected. Um, and, um, not only, and you're gonna argue this, was I denied. The opportunity to come in in early May, when I have to come on the planning board in early May, when I have to email in April, I'm here in June. Coming for the board, um, I was also explicitly instructed not to communicate with anybody. Furthermore, in my opinion, the most egregious part of this all is that, um. Town staff was told that the staff sheets were unclear regarding who they report to, the planning board, i.e. the chairman. Or myself as the town manager. I just wanna make it very clear.
I said that?
Our S A thirty-seven is very clear, and I would also encourage you all to.
I agree that staff, the planning staff, works for you, all the staff in the town, works for you. I, I've said that numerous times, I don't know where, where did that come from, I, I've always said that the staff in this. In town.
The statutes were unclear or they were gray as to who they report to.
I've always said that, that you control staff, and you control the budget for the planning. Now, having said that, I also think that it's your responsibility as town manager. To provide staff and provide finances. For planning board to use and, and the scope of their duties. You know, I don't, I don't think it's worth holding Indians that back and say, oh, the staff can't talk to any planning board members, see, I mean.
I mean, I, I never said that.
Oh, yeah. Well, or, or the planning board members can't talk to the staff. You have? You sent it to me and said the light wouldn't do it.
That you couldn't talk to the staff? What, what kind, are you talking about town staff? Are you talking about the third-party engineer?
Oh, I talked about town staff.
I, I don't believe I ever said that, but anyways, um. I just wanna make it clear, and you obviously agree, that town's planning staff reports to me.
And, and I am sitting here tonight telling you that I agree.
But, but I sometimes think that.
If we can't get what we need out of town staff.
Then you come to me.
And, and I think I just reiterated that to you that myself and Mr. Spanos, Mr. Spanos have come to you on numerous occasions. Things have not gotten any better. Why? You gotta keep coming to the same rabbit hole when there's no rabbit in? I mean, you know.
As we all know, they're all announced to retire. She was forced to. You gave her a deadline of June one to tell the planning board. Does that sound like they are reporting to you or they are reporting to me?
Whoa, 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 wait a minute. There's, there's something wrong with this picture because what happened was.
I asked Carol if I could say this this evening.
Oh, oh, well, well, okay then. That's fine. And, and I'm not gonna comment because, I, I'm not gonna comment because we discussed it in non-public sessions. But that's, what you're saying is not correct.
Did you or did you not give Carol a deadline of June first to tell the planning board meeting? I guess you were gonna have a date.
I, I can't, because we were non-public, I'm not supposed to talk about it.
Thank you. You, you asked me to give you a specific date, um, where you could make it up. In the specific date, June first, so it is after June first. So now it is.
Does that sound like she's reporting to you or to me?
And Carol? That was done in a non-public session.
Well, and it's about the employee, and the employee can make the non-public session public if they choose to. They're the only ones who are allowed to.
Yeah, I mean, so now she's admitting, but now she's. I didn't give them deadline. I don't wanna get that.
Well, you made her pick a date.
We asked if she could give us, I, I was supposed to talk about.
Why I'm going down, why I'm introducing this to the conversation is that I know it's gonna be extremely challenging for me to replace Carol under this firm condition. And I know that you have expressed that you would like to be part of the hiring process for the new planner or the planning assistant or Zonia's business. And at this point in time, under these conditions, I'm not comfortable with that. Because of everything we discussed this evening and also how we're gonna move forward and what is going to be the boundaries and what is going to be the protocol, what is going to be the chain of communication. It's gonna be very difficult for me to hire someone. And so, I just wanna put it out there and I'm just asking the board as a whole to maybe establish some clear, consistent standard of decorum for all members, outline expectations, professional conduct, respect of dialogue, because I think we could get better at that. Um, and I know it's gonna be difficult for me to hire someone and come on board and throw them into this scenario that we have.
I think it's gonna be extremely difficult for you to hire somebody without any input from the planning board as to what it is you're looking for, or to have, to have them as part of the hiring process from, from, hang on, so I'll get to your line back. From day one. In this town, there's always been representation on the committees that have hired a planner. Even you, when you talked to me, said, well, I'm not sure if we're gonna hire a planner or what we're gonna do. That's, to me, that's not yours to choose. That's the plan.
Well, actually, it is mine to choose. Person responsible for hiring and firing and compensation of all employees. I am administrative head of all departments.
But, if that's, whatever road you go down, if this planning board is not happy with it. If you're not, if, if we're not, that's right. If you're not hap, if we're not happy with it, you're right. It's gonna be extremely difficult. So it, it appears to me, like Martina says. Margarita. Where did Martina come from? I'm sorry, margarita. If, if we don't come to some sort of consensus, the planning board's have, gonna have to go out on its own and hire a subcontractor, just like we did. Well, hi- hiring a third party, another third-party engineer. Do I think that's the way to go?
I think that would be the planning boards not following.
I agree. But I think at this point in time, you know, it, it might be a consideration and it would just be a vote. I mean, I don't think we wanna go there.
I don't think we wanna go there either. I'm just saying, with the current state, the heated, the contention, the emails, the correspondence, the, the, the exchanges, I don't find it appropriate right now.
They're mostly professional. They're, they're, they're mostly talking about applications. When is this ready? Joe had a comment he wants. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Planning board is an exception. It's the exception of the planning board. The planning board has always been interviewing and discussing with the future player of the town. It's never, never, it's never been a plan that was not privy to hiring town plan. She is here now, we won't be privy to it anymore. That's what I'm referring, figure what you're saying. It'll be a good description, hire who you want. It's not even where I need for the money.
I'm not saying that, Joe. What I'm saying is all expressed to be part of that process, and at this moment, I am not comfortable with that.
She doesn't want Paul being part of the process, so that's what you said.
There are five members in the board to discuss it, so he's one member out of five, plus the ultimate.
And that's fine. I, I hope, right? You wanna bring it all to the whole board? I think that's even better.
We always have before.
I haven't decided upon a process.
Don't feel bad. I didn't even know you were looking for a planner.
We're, we're currently not.
We don't even know she is. We, we don't know if you're looking for a planner. Or whether or not you're looking for some other sort of way forward. Don't you think that it would be nice for the planning board to, to have input and know, I mean.
Yeah, I think.
You know, there's a separation between town manager and the planning. You know, I mean, the planning board is. Obvious, and so it's an elected party that, that runs its business, you know? We should be part of every decision that has to do with the dissemination, the gathering of information, all of that stuff. And the person that's gonna do that and how they're gonna do it, guess if we're not, then.
Paul, in a perfect world, I don't disagree, but under the current state of affairs, it, it's very hard to swallow that now. In a perfect world where we all work together and we all communicate with each other and there's established boundaries and professionalism with each other, I would not disagree at all. That is not how we're operating. And until that changes, I don't know what my decision is. But until we can be professional and civil and establish boundaries and, and have a decorum and a chain of communication, then, then maybe things will change.
You're calling. Being civil because I don't, I ask through emails or phone calls or whatever questions about planning, that that's not civil?
I'm not talking about the specific meetings. There are a lot of emails in which you aren't civil.
I may be frank, but.
I guess that it's semantics, right?
If you wanna seem a little like, show you, but it's, it's not, it's not meant to be that way. I mean, it's meant to be frank.
That's all I have this evening.
Okay, so we will have a, we will have a non-public, it's not non-public, publicing of comments, their work session. We'll have a work session to review how communication goes between the planning board and the engineering staff. What else did you want us to come up with?
I think the board as a whole can have a conversation about whether we wanna establish maybe decorum standards or you want to establish the chain of communication, not only with the third-party engineer, but also with town staff.
Uh, I wrote, I reviewed town engineers and town staff. I have written both of those down. We can talk about. Carol, do you have that on it, um, for the work session? So we'll discuss the, the chain of, of communication between the planning board and engineers and how we're going to communicate with town staff. Now, so I have the question for you. They work for you. Do you wanna be at that meeting so that we can say, hey, this is how we think, or, or we're just gonna tell you, hey, Corinne, we, we, we think we should be able to talk, Carol, whenever we're, or the town planner, whenever we, and you're gonna say, no, you can't do that, so. Where are we in faith? I'm just asking.
I'm more willing to be involved in the conversation. If you would rather have a conversation without me and amongst yourselves first, that would be fine as well too. But I'm more, I, I'll be involved in the conversation. I know I like to talk.
I, it's, I'm not coming. But I, but I do, you know, in, in the interest of, of, again, the interest of of working together, trying to, I think, I.
I think you're working together as much.
I think you should be.
Okay, I'll be there.
You know, 'cause you're, you're part of the solution. You're saying that I'm part of the problem. So, the only, the only, the only way we're gonna get through this is if we can.
I'm here to work with you. I would like our relationship. I never thought that. I said, under current conditions. But I am here to make this process better for all of us. I make, uh, have stronger meetings, stronger employees, stronger applications, a stronger representation. I mean, that's what we're all here for, right?
And just so you know, what I'm here for.
Is the same.
No, what I'm here for is to make sure that our meetings don't go till eleven o'clock at night and that the applicants who come in here don't use the town, their staff, the, the third-party engineers to do their work for them. We, when they come in, they should be ready and we should not have to say, oh, we're gonna have to carry this to another meeting. I don't mean because something else come up during a meeting. I mean, they should be prepared from day one to go. And, and that doesn't happen a lot. It's, oh, uh, we, we didn't get the, to answer those questions from the town engineer after the second review, so we're gonna have to have another meeting. No, I'm not into that. I'm not gonna sit here and have meeting after meeting after meeting because someone else didn't do their work. And, and, and that's, that's where I come.
Sure, and Paul, and I think that's a fair perspective for you to have as an individual on the planning board. But I also think that there are four other members on the planning board who might have a difference about meeting. And I also think, no matter what, you have to follow state law. And so that needs to be at the forefront of everyone's mind moving forward when it comes to application within the process. Is making sure you follow state law. Do I think you're gonna get a perfect application every time someone comes in? No, I think there are things you should discuss with the planning board, because just like you want the applicant to do their job, the planning board needs to do their job as well.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more. And Carol, I would also like to put on that, um, work meeting to review the T R T. And see how the board thinks we should go forward from there. And I think now, Corinne says it's, my understanding is saying T R T's not a review anything?
No, not, not formally. I mean. Does the engineer get input from the fire chief? Yes. Does the engineer get input from public works? Yes. Are we meeting around a circle, around a table and looking over things and doing a, a formal T R T? No, we are not.
If that does hap, should that happen again? It, it does require public.
It, it, uh, an agenda.
It requires a public hearing, notification.
I'll look into that. Because.
No, seriously, I'll, it's.
I'll look into it. I, I do my own work too.
And, and, and as you should, shouldn't believe me, you should check it out for yourself. Okay, so we have an applicant that keeps going through, um, for their review going on. And now, um, let's say they, they decide to take time because they have to do whatever. Their schedule doesn't allot them to be in a certain timeframe, so they suggest, well, can we bump it down, say, two meetings or three meetings? Does that put us in jeopardy in this state law?
As long as the applicant agrees to it, no. So you technically have the sixty days from the time you consider an application complete. You technically around the clock have sixty days to either approve or deny it. If the applicant comes in and says, I need more time, I'm not gonna make it in that sixty days. As long as they agree or they are requesting it, then you are okay. You can take more time, but you can't force them to do so.
Alright. Mike, you know, I've only been here a short time per se, and I'm traumatized with some. Last year, we met, I'm gonna say six to eight months of meetings. And some of them went pretty late. Okay, I think we got a record last time I was here, it was almost eleven o'clock. But that's pretty much out there. Okay, so, in accordance with Paul or, or even the board with the. But we're trying to get them to do their work, to make sure that they're squared away. So when they do come in here, that they're all set to go, and that is the idea of doing everything. And again, they should have it done within a sixty-day timeframe, but you and I both know people don't do things unless there's sometimes a consequence, so they need a little push. They kind of let things just, you, you know, boost up. Um, so that's what I'm kinda saying where we were going with things is, we don't want you back here until you're done.
And I think, I think the rules that you kind of established when you started going through the rules in February are appropriate. I think having them come back in two weeks is setting you up to fail. I think when you decided that you're not coming back in two weeks, if we have to continue the meeting, you're being pushed out a month, not two weeks. I think that will help you, because when I think when you said you're coming back in two weeks, you were setting your, you were setting yourself up to fail. Because the time the review happened and then the engineer has the time to look at it, you were never going to meet that deadline. So I think the pushing it out a month will help you, even though it's pushed out a month. I think it will help you get better applications, better information in front of you when you are reviewing it than if you were doing it on that two-week timeframe.
So I'm just trying to explain that that was a fine set.
Oh, absolutely. And I think, I'm, I'm here for you guys. If you wanna make your checklist stricter, you wanna make the requirements on that checklist more detailed, more defined, you should. But you should do it in the appropriate fashion in which, you know, the checklist is updated, everybody knows what they need. It, it's just clear and consistent. So the applicant, if they come in and says, I don't know what else, well, you shouldn't know, because here you are, it's all outlined here. Um, I understand. I think, and she tells me example last year, that was, that was painfully long. And I think the meetings were painfully long and it got pushed out forever. I want you guys to be more effective and efficient in how you do things. Um, but I also think you have to follow state law and you have to do things the right way.
I, I agree with all being said here. But I think we have to keep in mind what our role is. It's not to have the third-party review it and the, the town staff to get a perfect application so that we can bring it in and go, yes, I understand. Okay, it's a process. I didn't imagine hell. Okay, it's a process, and I imagine hell, as late as those meetings were and frustrating as that that. Process was, it was the right process. They came in with an application that changed. Every week, or every every meeting, something got changed because of something that. We wanted to change, something that the butters brought up, something that the. Uh applicant decided would be better for the project. I don't think, in my opinion, any. It was never a change that made that application worse. It always made the application better. Whether it was through the number of sites, layout of the sites, uh whatever, okay? They it it was a process, a long, painful process. Now, I also don't think it'd be unrealistic to say, okay. The meeting tonight is gonna end no later than ten o'clock, or no later than nine thirty, whatever the time is.
I think.
And when we get to nine thirty. We'll say, we still haven't brought this to conclusion. We're gonna. Uh postpone it, table it till the next meeting.
Oh, if I could send Robert to there just one second, that. I've always thought that was a great idea. Unfortunately, what it does is, rest of the agenda goes away as well. So if people have been sitting there, or say we say, uh uh, we're not gonna run meeting any longer than, let's say, nine or ten o'clock. And there's people that have been sitting there since six o'clock, and we just cut the meeting off, they gotta come back again. And I don't know that that's fair. Maybe what we need to do is take this, the lesser, can we take the lesser? A- and and that's where you have to take a look at the agenda and and say. Maybe we take the let ones that are faster, easier, and do that first, and make the ones that are bigger and harder go later. I don't know, but I don't think it's fair to look to make. Someone who comes in.
So someone sit here for two hours and never gonna get to sleep.
And and if they just wanna put a deck on their house, they wanna come in for a for a conceptual. And then we say, we're not gonna talk too late, because we just finished three hours with these guys.
Well, and that's also why I think you need to lean on your town planning staff and drafting the agenda and. Moving things around on the agenda that seem to be make sense. And maybe, if you know it's a heavy lift. You say, you're not coming back next week, you're coming back in a month. I think you all agreed upon that, and you went over your procedures, you know, so I think. You're never gonna get it right, you're never gonna be perfect about it, but I do think there's ways to, I don't wanna say manipulate the agenda, but to craft your agenda. For.
I tried that, you didn't like it. Should it be there because it was gonna take too long and I want to be there, but it didn't work.
I'm just, I I think, I I think it's a crafty, but I do think like the budget committee, they say we're cutting off at this time and they and they do it. I know the budget committee is different than the.
And they don't have a lot of publicity.
No, but I think, I think you could set your agendas up. Differently, more effectively, more efficiently, to try to address things, like you said, maybe instead of new business always going first. You do old business first, or maybe instead of old business always going first, you do new business first. Kind of gotta look at it, and I think make kind of a a game time decision on what you think is gonna be best.
But I think when you set the agenda, you had a question as to whether or not the chair should set the agenda. Typically, what I've been doing is I will come in and talk to Carol about the agenda, and I will also run up my mic. And 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 then, I think the chair at the end is the final determination as to how it goes forward, taking their their comments into consideration. But someone has to be the one that says, you're not gonna be on here at this time because you're gonna take too long.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that, Paul. My issue was you. Mandating what could and what couldn't be on, or you saying things needed to come off.
Well, yeah, I did that after discussion.
Yeah, but that wasn't, that wasn't the only one. I mean.
Someone has, someone has to take that that role on, you know, I mean, a horse likes the guy that no one likes.
Unfortunately.
This, sometimes, you know, we sit here and we're trying to, Ray just got his information on Monday.
Well, again.
You know, it wasn't in trying to think more thought.
That kind of back going back to OJ's point, I I don't disagree with you, OJ. I think every time the Manche Hill came in and revised their their plan. It worked in favor of the town and the butters, and I think the the end product was better than the beginning product, right? Very much so. But I think we ran into a lot of that, Steve, where they submitted something, the ninety four to Ray Corber. And you all were looking at it for the first time that evening, and maybe you shouldn't even have looked at it that evening and said, okay, we didn't get it.
And we think we're supposed to get our packets on Friday. Carol says she's busy. We can't get them on Friday, or you can't. She's, she gets to us that, you know, she's calling and saying, they're ready at, I don't know, five, six, seven o'clock. She's still here. God bless her, doing doing all that stuff, but, I mean, you know, I don't. We can't have that either. We need time to be able to, I need time to speak to myself, to be able to review that stuff. And I, you know, I'm just like everybody else, Monday through Friday, sometimes Saturday and Sunday at work, so I I find it, so I at least get some time to be able to do that.
Yeah, I don't disagree, but I I I will stand up for being Carol's defense, like you get almost all of it election.
Okay, but let me think, when you're trying to look at a map, it doesn't work.
Okay, I'm just saying.
No.
It's not that you don't have access to it, you just don't like the format you're receiving.
And and sometimes, yeah, I mean, we voted on numerous cases, numerous cases, at least two that I know. Said, this planning board will receive their packets on Friday, be hard cop. That's a bulk of the planning, which has happened twice. Also, we need to get better at doing that too. Okay?
I don't know what the law or protocol is. Maybe I'm doing the block, but at selectmen's meetings. The chair in consult with the two other selectmen will often change what they're written to get. I never make that. I might ask Jane to put something on the agenda, but but thirteen years, I have never made an agenda. All right. But what I will do, again, it's all from the two other cohorts, will will move something this up or down or whatever. Um, just the other night, you had someone who was at a sports banquet who wouldn't be here at five thirty. But when they got here, we're just gonna move it down until they showed up. No big deal. Um, there's other times where I see people sitting out there, and I know they're here for the agenda item number four. We'll do that first, because that's what they're here for, they wanna see it, and there's no sense making moves it around. Is it, is it fair for either the, well, for the.
Well, the law says.
The chair and the the board to to say, you know, does anyone object if we take item four up first? No objection?
Yeah, but you can move. Yeah, I was gonna say, you can, you don't have to follow the agenda.
But I I think, you know, you're.
We're done at the planning board.
We've done, we've done that. We've actually, we've actually moved meetings because there weren't members here. And that want to be here as part of things. Said, hey, look, I know they've expressed an interest, can we move something to another date? So we have done that, so we have done those types of things. But I I mean, I I can tell you that. There's been a lot of times when people have been in here and they have to sit through these long processes, and then. At the end, it's ten o'clock and you, or eleven o'clock, and you're trying to make a informed, intelligent decision. At eleven o'clock at night, after having gone through a whirlwind of information with engineers, attorneys, you know, whoever's present. And it it's not fair to the board.
Well, I I and I think, Paul, as your role as chairman, a lot of it has to do with meeting management as well. I know that you're obviously. Relatively new to the chair position, and with someone else previously, but, you know, in a lot of meetings, when it comes to public comment, or when it comes, you have two minutes. You have two minutes, and after you have two minutes, you sit back down, you're not allowed to come back up until everybody else has spoken their turn. There's also a lot of arguing amongst individual members or this and that, where like. That's probably not the decorum you wanna have, you know? You probably want to say, you only should be speaking to me, you shouldn't be speaking to each other, you shouldn't be arguing with the audience. You know, I think there's some meeting management practices that could also speed up the meeting a- as well. Not to say that you're, I think that's what you're trying to do, I think that's the goal, um but I think, you know, maybe that's.
This lady in back had a question about half an hour ago.
He was managing.
I mean, we'll take public comment for sure, but I just wanna let Karina and the board have their opportunity to say things of. Back forth to what they want to say, and then we can take public comment.
Oh, I'd like to say something.
Okay.
Thank you, Carol, for your service. It's really kind of unfortunate that we were aware this way. Like, it would've been cool if we could, like, celebrate you and all the things you did to the town, so.
If you're done in four or five months. Carol's here until when, December?
Till the end of December.
End of December.
Let's be scare up. Okay, we wanna keep you.
Well, can I just say something, you know, you're you're um going on about getting things on Friday? Okay, so let me just tell you that the developers love to come in on Friday because they don't live here. So usually Thursday and Friday are our busiest days, with people coming in. Asking questions, wanting help, and so needless to say, when they're standing at the window and they're, or they're on the phone. That comes first. So I have to wait until all that's over with, and I can. And nobody can come in. Some of the time, applicants do not get their stuffing until Thursday or Friday afternoon, so.
Well, what we need to do.
Do the best I can.
What we need to do is address that as a board, and we need to say that their stuff needs to be in a minimum of X amount of days. Or it's not gonna be on that agenda. Because that will give you time up. To be able to sort it out and and make coffees or do it, and there, you're not supposed to be making coffees or anything. They're supposed to be bringing everything with them.
Right.
And 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 I think sometimes. You're a nice enough person that you just make coffees for them, or, you know.
What if there was a place where, I I understand you bought it on Friday, but what if Carol? What if she dropped them off on the li- at the library on Friday evening before her way out of town, and everyone could come on Saturday to pick it up at the library? Would that be?
You know what we used to have, or before your, long before your time, but. Um, when I was first chairman. The police department used to bring them around. They were, they were, when they were done, when the packets were done, right?
You want, you want to get attacked by a dog.
Yeah, but seriously, the police department, I'm serious, they they used to bring them around to the planning board.
I don't know, I think they're buying them up for doing that, so what if we drop them off at the library and everyone can pick them up on Saturday morning at the library, on the library.
That's fine.
I like that idea, yeah.
You know, just so you're not waiting till Monday, or I I don't mind.
Is there a same place to put in the library?
I mean, I think they're open till eight. I'm sure if I spoke to Carol.
Are they open on?
Fridays? I'll have to look at the hours, but if if the hours work, and Carol Riley is willing to do so, I don't mind asking her if. Carol could drop them off on her way out of town, so you guys could pick them up.
The the town has a dispatch, it's open twenty-four seven, you can drop them off over there, you can pick them up anytime, we wanna go pick them up.
We we could probably.
That way you don't have to wait till the library is open.
Yep.
Bring more of the dispatch, we'll pick them up, you know, whenever we're up. We're gonna let me on nine, ten o'clock, nine, one, go over there.
Would that only be if Carol wasn't able to get them?
Out during the day, yeah.
But if she was, we could still.
Pick them up, yeah, yeah.
She make, yeah, I don't know, how would that work? Would that be more confusing than just saying, they'll be ready at the dispatch every week? That way there, you don't have. Does that make it?
Well, I mean, if she has them ready on Friday morning, you're willing to go, why not have them ready on Friday morning, so others will wanna pick them up?
How is she gonna convey that they're gonna be at the dispatch? Is she gonna send us mail?
I'll go here if. Friday at five o'clock, if you, if you ever come pick up a packet, it's going to, it goes going to the.
There we go. Does that work for you, Carol?
Somebody could come over and pick them up.
Yeah, I mean.
We're, are we talking dispatch or the library?
We're, well, we're talking dispatch now, because they're twenty-four hours. So let me talk to the chief, I'm sure you were.
If anybody, yeah, if anyone has a pickup and bag, like what you said, by five, Friday at five o'clock. You know, you can go to dispatch and get them, because they're twenty-four seven.
Yeah, I agree.
Does that work?
I will talk to the chief.
I do ninety-five percent.
I don't do very well, but I don't know why people think I sent so many text messages this way.
Are we done?
So anyone have any further questions for Karina before before I let you go?
I was just, um, I was just gonna make a comment that I recently went through a renovation project, and I found that the town was really helpful. When you went in with the application, if you were missing something, and I find that Carol has been that way when I had a question. So as much as you say that, you know, it's not your job to, it, they were very helpful when I, when I came in here asking questions. Carol was very helpful, and when I did that in the town of Amherst recently, you're like, oh, you this, this, this. Thank you, I left, got that information to kick back in, I'm assuming you think that happens. That's all I. As a, just as a consumer property owner. We try to do.
And and there's nothing to be unhelpful, but you can be helpful to a fault too, and it costs Carol. A a lot of time at the window, depending on, like you said, how many people come in and talk to her during the day, and then she can't get. Some of the things done that she needs to get done, so, you know, this board has always said, look, it's up to the. Person standing on the other side of the window to kind of be able to take a look at what the town's rules and regulations are, and then. Try and try and do the application that way, and then if they had any questions after that, because some of the bigger applications, we were getting stuff that. People weren't, weren't submitting, and 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 they should have known it.
Well, and I also think there's a difference when you're going through the land use permit process than you are if you're going through the subdivision or site plan. I mean, we are, that's our job in-house is to help people through the land use, you know, um. But I I agree, I agree with both sides.
So Carol, can you just reiterate what that list is? Hey, Karina, I wanna make sure you get everything on there that you need. Right?
Can you have, can you have, you know, give it to her?
Um, so I have, my list includes reviewing the checklist with site plan review and subdivision. Uh, make a list of things to discuss up in work second. Your work second would include, um. Uh, communicate chain of communication between the planning board. And uh, the third party reviewer and the planning board and the staff. Um, and review the. TRT. And then I I just put review the statutes.
All right, so are you okay with all that? Or anything else you wanna go on there?
The forum standards.
Objective chain of communication. Yeah, she's like, including the engineer, the town staff, decorum, respect, expectations.
It makes a difference, but. Yeah, we still got other, I just wanted to let Karina go, make sure everyone's.
You don't need, anything else to say now? Thank you, thank you.
Uh, alternates, is there Susan Barubi here?
We say Faraday in Massura, and it's Barubi's mansion.
You get another chance, you both, I think, I think you like it.
I, we say Faraday.
How about Sue? So Sue wrote a letter in depth for the ultimate planning board member application. Uh, did everyone have a chance to read it, or looks like we didn't read it aloud? You read it? Okay, um, is he here? Does anyone have any questions for Sue?
You've been to a couple of our meetings.
Uh, and I watched someone do it as well.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And came out of interest to see what it was like in the town, and I've been in the back of that bird, I've been.
Just curious, do you favor master girls or control girls?
In my favor of control group. In my favor of control growth.
Cause right now we're going to.
No.
I think it's four miles long, three miles wide. We already get another fifteen hundred condos coming in.
Yeah, but that's already been, yeah.
You find a way to balance it, not saying yes or no, but you can find a way to have goals and growth. I'm gonna take your time, not all.
Yeah, I. Uh, recently we bought a property in Yampers, I'm sure, did some renovations and um I've. Found Yampers very interesting because they have a historical district, very strict guidelines, but the some Bedford and Hampshire does that as well. Um, Bedford, where I've been since nineteen ninety-six, um, they have like their performance zone. I think there was one meeting that I attended here that we talked about the town planner and. You know, what do you guys envision for the town in the future, how you see things uh developing like with the building across the street?
The other one?
I mean, it's actually looking better than I expected.
Yes, but look at the chip back.
I sure.
So so so, okay.
Um, I have loved the town for a long time. I like, you know. There's towns that you drive into with stock from law, Yampers and Hampshire, and they just have a feel and. I don't know necessarily how the child, people that have lived and grown up here. Um, feel, but I think that that's important. You guys talked about possibly creating a community. And and developing that type of plan for future growth and I think that's wonderful. When you go. And you travel the steamboat, for example, it still has that cowboy feel. Someone is trying that. Making sure that they have legs to stand on to make the developers. You know, put in a McDonald's that doesn't look like a McDonald's or put in uh Hampton Inn that doesn't necessarily work that. Because it fits within the town. I don't know how that would happen, but. I would guess that a lot of the people that live in the town, um, I know I haven't killed that, but I.
So Sue, I have a question for you. It says your goal would be to help protect and enhance the unique character of one. What in your opinion is a unique character of one?
I love it when the first to one main street and you see some of the older buildings that have been maintained and restored. And I think it would be wonderful if that could be maintained up and down, thanks to. Um, I don't know if that's.
Totally agree with you.
Yeah, but the building, the building that burned down, for example, if if that person wants to make a decision to rebuild, you know. Wouldn't we be able to say, well, we want it to be fitting within what the town looks like, you know, this main street, mill town. And a lot of the, I feel that a lot of the towns that you visit that have been that are successful now. Have been very successful at maintaining the look, even if it's maybe a facade, but they've been able to maintain that. Looking real and then I could teach the town successful. Like North Conway, I lived there. Back in the early nineties and you know, you've got the main street, you're coming up over the hill and you look up at Mount Washington. But then you're looking out at Southern Street and that is their performance though. But when you head up into North Conway. Where they have the East River Slope Inn, they have maintained that section of the town and you. And and I think that Lincoln has that opportunity because. The way it's being developed now, there's some buildings to like torn down and rebuilt, well, it'd be lovely if they were torn down and rebuilt. To look aesthetically and I can't, I don't feel like I can speak to what the townspeople would want, but I'm. Asking that even the tourists would like it, so.
So that was my question too, because I've I've lived in this town for a long time.
Yeah.
And again, it's it's for me, I find the beauty is in me, I can hold it.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a lot of people, myself included, that used to like to look the mountains. Now we have ski slopes coming down. I used to, I still try and hunt fish, but when I go out on the rivers, just more people you shake a stick at and try and go hunting. These people walking around with their fur coats and their dogs in the woods.
Yeah.
So I mean, you talk about the unique character and for me, Lincoln's lost a lot of its character. For me, being here is a long time for us, I mean, the traffic on Main Street. Trying to buy gas and groceries, I mean, can't, we're we're losing our, one of the biggest concerns I have for Lincoln right now. All in all, is that we're gonna lose our drugstore down here in town. We've had a pharmacy in town since I was a kid.
That was one of the best.
You know, and and you know, we're gonna lose it. And I don't think that anyone's trying to figure out. What we could do about it, if the town could do anything, but we should, because we have a lot of older citizens, we have a lot of people that are here that that that. Use that drugstore myself.
Yeah.
But I mean, it is, it's one of the things to me that should be forefront. Uh, we shouldn't be worrying about whether. Uh, people have housing right now, um, at at a time when. Uh, we're not even gonna have drugs. So I mean, it to me, there's other things, you know, I mean, and. We've lost a lot of our small town feeling character. I understand that's all, that's all part of progress and this board needs to be as diversified as it can. Some think that that's great. Some probably don't don't think it's so great. No, we've lost a lot of a lot of property that used to be. Lived in and grown up in by the locals to the people that have more money can come in here and buy them and upgrade or modify them. So it buried few long time native locals. And I'm not saying that's that's a terrible thing, I'm just saying that's that's fact of life. But how you deal with that, how fast you deal with that, I don't think Lincoln's done a great job with, I mean, we've. I asked a lot of people a question. We have developers in town who develop major tracks of length. And there's a lot of one that have made a major contribution to the town, like in regards to parks, school, police, town. I don't know. And you know, I look at that and think that would drive. I mean, you know, I just get taken back by the fact that if they really want this town should be looking. The way you're talking about, and I agree with that, because that's gonna attract more people. People came here because of that. And I hear more people now that. Have been second homeowners there complaining about what's happening now than I just feel local because it's less local people.
No, I I uh lived in North Conway in ninety-one and I was a insurance claim protester and I, this was my territory. I used to handle all the claims for all the condos that got built immediately that weren't insulated properly and all. And then, you know, like when they purchased over there and they put in the restaurants and the one loved it there and they're renovating it. It seems like nothing has been successful there and but he does seem to be committed to making it successful there and in in making it. Look nice and improving it. And when I first looked at that and thought, wow, I mean, when he came into that meeting. He's he knew he wasn't gonna have enough parking. He he said, I'm not gonna have enough parking. And. But it seems like when the town can work with developers and say, okay, you don't have enough parking, just like. The Jitsy Cat, I love the Jitsy Cat, but they don't actually park me. Um, and that's just the way it's been, if he purchased it knowing that. But how can the town work with the contractors to say, all right, well, you know, you got this other property, you know, the parking is an issue. We gotta work out something here so that you can keep those restaurants in that building that maybe you shouldn't have opened, that's not sure, but. Um, because you don't have enough parking, how about we have some parking space on this property that you own? That everyone benefits from? So I mean, when I was just out on the steamboat back in. February, my husband and I were looking at property out there and same thing, we said, no, wait, it is so busy and so crowded. But there was an article in the paper and it was about a developer that was making building condos and that they had. Sold some of that unit to local businesses at cost that they could use for their plan out. And it was, it was a really nice article talking about how they were trying to work together. Um. And sometimes, you know, it did appear that maybe something would get approved that we wouldn't have maybe allowed. Um, but they were solving one problem by maybe being a little lenient and stuff. So if you're, and I have to say hypothetically, if you're lenient on the parking issue, because it would be great for that building to be successful. Finally, we seem to be willing to put in the dollars so it can happen. They need to develop this town like a woodstock grandma. Or if they want that plenty of hell to come here, they've gotta do that. And so. Getting them on board, which I think they are, you know, and working with the town to make that happen. The town's been discovered, I think, there's no turning back from that, but having it be developed in a. Thoughtful way is the best idea. I mean, I love Lincolnwood, but I only know there are certain times now with my dog because. I just can't handle. Yeah, I really just have a really good way to like of the land base, like, what the, we're the only two here, it's shocking, you know, so. You know, I'm I I don't feel like I can call myself a local. I went to New Hampshire and Miami one and my husband still feels like I'm not. So. But I would just like to see, I don't know, the responsible owners, but we can't. And I've seen the town of Yampers has done a phenomenal job of maintaining their downtown. They have a green stage. Every building is white. I mean, you may not agree with it, but that's what the town people voted for. They have an amazing downtown, which the town has entered to die for and they just send that. But when someone buys a property there and and you're in the historic district, you know what you're getting yourself. And I think like saying clear and concise and consistent. You know, there was a meeting I attended and it came up about variances. Again, I feel like it has to be clear and concise and consistent. Or you're opening your thoughts up monster.
Also, I I certainly would make a recommendation.
That's a motion.
I'll second that.
Motion second, all in favor? I'm staying. However, you will have to go and get sworn in.
On Friday.
Carol can run you through that process. Um, welcome aboard.
Yeah, I'll sign, I'll sign, well.
Carol can give you a little bit.
Write in anybody from the other towns because I think we're gonna have a full, I mean, I think it's, it will be just us. And the zoning board and the planning board and the staff.
I think that's a good idea. Can we adapt that, just to explain how an alternate works?
How an alternate works?
Yeah.
So an alternate can participate in any meeting in the conversations. They cannot vote unless they are taking the place of a full member. Um, that's typically the way we run. Um, the alternates are assigned if someone's asked typically by the chair. And if if I'm the chair, I I would try and rotate between people so everyone gets an option to participate. And and can be part of it, you know.
Right.
Um, other than that, you are encouraged to be at all meetings. You know, um, you're encouraged, I would encourage you to take any training that comes up. Um, there's all sorts of online training um you can do. Carol can give you information about that. Um, and other than that, did I miss something?
Um, you would be sitting at the table typically, um, and and as Paul said, en- engage in the uh conversation. And then let's say someone wasn't here and he stat you on that. That I'm saying, it's on that application. Let's say it gets postponed till the following meeting and whoever you were replacing is now back. You still sit for the revenging of that application.
I believe that's the case, I'm not sure, but I thought, but any any new business, the other one.
The other one would say.
They didn't hear the.
Right.
Because they missed.
And if you are traveling, like you can come in on Zoom.
Yes.
They do.
You can, you you can always come in on Zoom and if you are, if there was, let's say there was three of us absent. Or or two of us absent and you two happen to be on Zoom. As long as there was three full-time members there, you could participate as members on Zoom.
Right, they just have to.
Voting rights, but there would have to be three members here physically.
Yeah, physically present, I have to have three regular members. Yeah, three members sitting, not regular, but just three members I've sit in here and then. Everybody else can zoom in.
I would have thought this gave you off at the highest.
There was no access.
It's maybe both telephonic or uncertain. All right, so.
Well, I just wanna say Sue, um, you get sworn in by the town clerk.
Okay.
And she is here Monday, Wednesday, Friday, so Friday she's here from ten to three. And I'll let her know.
Okay, we have public participation. Emily, do you guys, you've been sitting out there all night long and that's something?
Uh, I was just watching the show, uh, being if I maybe wanna join this at some point, but uh. Uh, I don't wanna say yes right now.
Okay.
I wanna know what's going on.
If you feel. Uh, that you really wanna do it, we just encourage you to write a letter of, you know, of interest.
Yeah.
And as Sue did, you know, come in and we can, we're looking for one more, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm making a motion to adjourn the second. Okay, go ahead. That has nothing to do with this meeting, I'll just. I know, I know. You should ask for a question. What's your next question?
I would ask for the one line with three white.
That's that's.
When do you need those um questions to the lawyer by?
I would say we're gonna, we're gonna have another meeting in a a uh planning board meeting in two weeks. So I would say if you get into her within.
Yeah, see, the right now, this this period of time has been kinda crunchy for me because I also have had C B A meetings. And I have two hearings scheduled for next um for next week.
And we're starting C I P.
We're starting the C I P, so um. I probably wouldn't be able to reach out to him until um Monday afternoon, maybe.
So so we get, if we get our questions, say, within a week, say a week, would that be? Enough time for you to get them to Jason and that with a, whenever you, I think we get the questions to him. Then whether he comes to the next meeting or not, he he might say, I can't do that because I've scheduled it a quarter or whatever. At least he could have him to. Start processing him before we, he does actually come in on the Zoom.
Okay, so.
And I would tell Jason that he can zoom in, we don't expect him, but.
Well, would you expect, I would hope you were not gonna expect him to zoom in at the next meeting because you got the heights. And I think that's gonna take. I don't know, maybe. You also have the parking, so you have those two things on agenda for.
So let's see if if we make it for the.
The next, the the next one will be. July.
So we have one on the twenty-fifth. And then we have one on the ninth of July. About the ninth of July.
Good.
I just wanna get this thing started because we have people who are more interested in his mural thing, so.
So if you could get them to me, um, I'm gonna be on vacation for after the next the um. Next planning board meeting through July fourth.
So.
I'll be back on.
So the next planning board meeting's the twenty-fifth, you're going on vacation from.
Twenty-sixth.
The twenty-sixth through the what? The twenty sixth through the what?
Uh, the fourth and.
Twenty seventh. Through, through the fourth. So, so would the ninth be, would the ninth work, Carol? Try and get Jason here. On Zoom.
Yeah, you would, you would need to get him, uh, you should get him to me on Monday before the twenty sixth.
Okay, so questions to Carol. By the twenty third.
Alright, does that I can just cut and paste them, put them on the list?
Good night. And and then we'll try, you can try and see if Jason can zoom in on the night.
Oh, can I make one suggestion with, you know, I'm an attorney, the buyer. Litigating, I did a lot of that with the attorney. Um, I have always found that it's good if you guys collaborate, throw all your questions into a pile. And then decide, these are the four bullets that are really important, narrow it down. So that the meeting stays short and sweet because they charge so much money. I mean, that's what we always did as adjusters, we, you know, have a big. Liability case, we'd kind of get together, talk about what our questions were and then send them all to the attorney, like, there might just be four bullets. We want you to cover this, 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 and then it stays concentrating on that.
I think that, I think the first meeting's gotta be that we throw everything out of everyone, ask the questions because.
Yeah.
There, there's a lot of, this thing has an opportunity to go one way or the other, depending upon how you look at it, so.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I appreciate what you're saying, because it would save time and money, but. I I think this thing needs to be handled right, and Jason's probably as good a one to do it because he's been through it. And also, and then, as you saw tonight, just a lot of questions, so.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, I'll make motion to a journalist. A second, all in favor?